Malungilita sils el mer gmuirrogui. Malungilita sils el mer gau ma Vice Presidente Senador Mariur, ma Pro Liderigi del Senador Cecilil Aldabeel. Gmuirrogui il ngartian, mrengasuli il losa edel guk met magarel alsil, se misa igel bebirau aul tabalurelet ma kedugukmuk, lma langania kurapi esel ngarang e bodu gaadeng eringi. Bokma asmel tiang ya momon erol sils, la longet tiul togubetsel ondivergid el mora order.
Klerga, mwarolgol.
Senador Ogobaiki, kou inabo?
Oi.
Senator Chonatanchoi Saal?
Oi.
Senator Stevenson Chek Kuartei?
Oi.
Senator Tichey Murur Monsau?
Oi.
Senador Mark Blaubrodim?
Oi.
Senator Umi Sangabau?
Oi.
Senador Ogasugi El Tapsungino?
Oi.
Senador Andrew Tabelwal?
Oi.
Senator Salvador Sadoy Talams?
Oi.
Senator Mesonier Abangal Whipps? Pro Liderer Cecilil Aldabeel?
Oi.
Vice President Kray Mariur?
Oi.
President Dukotz Paules?
Oi.
Mr. President Angaekworum?
Angaekworum ya senadora Nierebangle Whipps a excuse bodontira Pro Liderigid Senador Aldabeel ma bolongetigaygargid raurerelet, Senador Aldabeel.
Mr. President, al mutel malungilita sils el mer gau ma Vice President ma bekal senators il guk nasilmera sesionel alsil. Sela domeseta il galaynderigiden kon talgibl gamaant, ni gataolingitakar rohren ma bekal adebots edel alameser ngi alsil. Mr. President, mitaborsel longaval ayram ma mumadaaptra 24th day journal ra 9 regular session.
Seda motion namdung esegn, tirgerroguil gongeldu oi om tok namoi sei, Pro Lider.
Kadamal mol, Mr. President, il morsel guk nextel ayram igel communication nar visa taitotorialme. Dednauta igel arinisel Prescam 11-253 ya nomination for appointment ra Mr. Robert Richmond, mo member Palau International Coreive Center, Adalaborosel Center. Diregal igel Prescam 11-254 ya nomination for reappointment ra Mr. Gabriel Sapuma, mo Adalabor de Palau International Coreive Center. Arinisel Prescam 11-255 ya transmitra Executive Order Number 479. Arinia diregal Prescam 11-256 ya update sel Fund Availability Analysis for FY 2023 ra girela supplemental bache. Sel mo lasta Prescam 11-256 ya transmitra Medical Referal Program Funding Bill. Igidha igel guk nadaitotorio, gidha malamol, malmorsel 6 ya igel nar department headselme. Madanautra Department Cam 11-61 ya transmitra note verbal na mbanar ya PHL-9-1-2022, etiam nar embesira Islamic Republic of Pakistan, lngara Bloramanila, girela invitation to Golden Jubilee Celebration of the Senate of Pakistan. Iisel Department Communication 11-62, etiam girela Pacific Leaders Gender Equity Declaration Consultation. Arinia diregal Department Communication 11-63, ya proposal amendment to immigration regulations digital resident tourism visa renewal. Igidha igel guk nar departmentelme, egida malamol, malmorsel ayram 7, igel guk nar House of Delegates. Madanautu sel House of Delegate Communication 11-137 ya transmitra House Joint Resolution 11-45-10S for our consideration. Egida kontinuel morsel ayram 8 ya reporting of standing committee reports. Ma kumumadaaptra standing committee report 11-153, etiam girela Senate Resolution 11-107.
Seda motion namdung esegn, bodontira Chairman JGA bol buskidha report, Senador Isal.
Bol wase, Mr. President, ma mursuratyal malungil. Aftanun levorgau ma Vice President tirgera Mariur, Senador Mariur, ma Pro Liderer Aldabeel, ma bekal members in attendance. Mr. President, tal standing committee report 11-153 amalu te el girela Senate Resolution 11-107, etiam resolution, Senate Resolution 11-107 na mulgura, Senate Resolution almo kanfirm ra presidential reappointment Ramiz Visaya Us Louis, Vice Excellency President Surangis Junior, il mutu morserv as a member of Palau Election Commission for a term of four years. Ma kamitigaw abex live to report as follows. Tal resolution was introduced on February 23, 2023 by you, Honorable Consipaulers, President tal Senate 11 albi dalulau. By request, it was referred then to your committee JGA for review and reporting. Ma maktera tal resolution akmal blaktaq tal taitol lamui ma egal blakto. Sela domesera, Ms. Louis resume. Ma kamitigama motigwa singa amne attendra Seven Day Adventist Elementary School, Nemenan to Palau High School. Ne urna associate degree ra science degree ra business education, Secretarial Science from Migrainece Occupational College tal mle, utenkele PCC, which is currently known as PCC Palau Elementary College. Then after, Galdila began working as an administrative assistant in the office of the President for 14 years. She worked as an administrative officer for the Palau Passport Office since January 2021 and eventually promoted to administrative officer 2 by April 2020. Ms. Louis is currently the administrator for the Palau Passport Office, a position she had held since February of 2021. Throughout the years, Galdila has attended numerous leadership workshops, trainings, and conferences to improve her leadership skills, i.e. Silibalau Anual Conferences and transformational leadership workshop for women. Your committee would like to know that Ms. Louis is an active member of Palau Red Cross Society as well as the Center for Women Empowerment Belau. Ms. Louis has served as a member of the Board of the Election Commission from 1986 to 2012, appreciating state, national, spatial, and referendum elections, giving her extensive knowledge and experience in the election process going back 30 years. Ms. Louis currently serves as the Chairman of the Palau Election Commission. During her current term, the Commission has held 104 meetings to which she has participated in 101 of those meetings. She has worked and continues to work with Palau Election Commission and understand the burdens that comes with this responsibility. Ms. Louis has shown her commitment in a similar role, including her 14 years of dedicated service to the passport office, which demonstrate her willingness to serve as the people of Palau or the people of the Republic. This invaluable attribute is essential to such roles as this as it secure the roles and responsibilities of the Palau Election Commission. Ngutu rega egida blakto, lgora akmal, nguttooi ma regordengaldil ya kamitigara JGA. Amo kankludwasi, Ms. Louis has vast experience pertaining to the Palau Election Commission and is well qualified to serve as its member. Therefore, ma kamitigawa recommend adoption of Senate Resolution Number 11-107 by the whole Senate. Ebo gurangasuyar bekal member, ma kamitil nesain tal report. Engani asol, mokushesel giretal report, Mr. President, depsatyal, Sulam.
Goran, ladi umilarogui ma bodusentio. Tirgerroguil gongertel standing committee report 11-153, ldu oi om tok namai, Pro Lider.
President, kadamal mol, nyara report to standing committee. Mumadaaptra standing committee report 11-154, etiam ukiel sel Senate Resolution 11-105.
Seda motion namdung esegn, bodontira Chairmanra Energy, Senador Mariur, bol buskidha report, Senador Mariur.
Sula Presidente, ma kamitigora PUT lga amne asan tal Resolution 11-105 lmeringi, ya appointment ra Amis Charlin Mursay, ilmo Adalabor de PPUC. Ma kamitigam losbel mes aigel guka resumer ngi, ma igel guka diregal nomlosel mora gal apointe a gal namini, ilmo omra igel guko singel, ma igel guko ldesuel giretal appointment el moringi. Enga el namini e Presidenta diregal malokro kra resumer ngi. Askul blaring, ya diregal mna askur a ilo, universitira war a ilo, e ilo bachelor's degree ngi ra anthropology and biology. Diregal mlo attendra universitira South Pacific ra Suba, Fizi, il ilo asel diploma, postgraduate diploma, ra Ocean Resources and Management, e auril segidhe mlosbel mora San Diego State University mlongwa master's degree ngi ra education. Engal Ms. Mursay e Presidenta, malimisil butoka aurorol blal ngaringi, na butokol bagro usul tretel auror. Madiaxal mama saigidha eganakamiti report, ma kuna serbeklaga lasabilimis aigidha. Akpa igawadimo tat saigel gukora abloloesel, blokumo loesakamitil, wa siri kidha diregal walgora mlosbel ngua. Sa usingelakamitil mora tegidhal appointment ra Ms. Mursay, luasin amral mosbel moswira PPUC. Engal, igel butokol luroblal ngaringi e Presidente, enga diregal mno mno omuli mninga gora igel siobay ngi, ilwas tal independent consultant enganga oner segidhal dukwaseng ISIS, etiam island social and electrical applied science. Etiam wa amne gerol gombali, nding diregal manewila moktegar ngi, lusewa igel guka resources mosbel mo ularolela mo ngil palasil na aigal natural resources siri kidha ablurbela Presidente. Igidha laltame nguror ra sel dukwaseng OERC, enganga National Environmental Coordinator, segidlo OERC. Esurbel Secretariat ra National Environment Protection Council, lomgela focus ra strategic planning, partnership building, my integration, integrating ra various sector policies. Igidha butokol gagarusel blal ngaringi e Presidente, ma blal longutmukla, ndiregal enga kamiti diregal milosel mori, lngomnesal malmudel, wa singa ngamkora mal butoka aigal gagarusel urerel, ma adurangi ya mlo ngil mo menartal, lmo ngertal appointment ra Presidente lmo Adalabor de PPUC. Ma igel mla igel mori, mlo ngalablolo sad, lwasenga madangli sel losingel ablurbela, wa segidha giredal mo change strateletelala denkirigid lmo diagodangara aigal fossil fuel, lgamora renewable energy. Mmada ngel, wa segidhal altame arinisel solar project, lngaringiseng oigidh lmo ra 20% ra walonsura 20% ra tegidhal fossil fuel, kidho uspering. Ya by 2025, engidha ablurbela, mnaurits ra 45%. Ya 22, mnauritsa 100%. Ngobengel segidhe Presidente, enganga segidh lgora wal commitment ablurbela, wa singidha mnauritsa segidhe, mlosbel ngi, wa sing aigal guk plan ngaringil urerel, nasabel moswira PPUC, ra igidh segidh plan. Sabel mo maraal guk mo kanekta igel aladra, blulada yuen, ma igel guka aladra, diregal mapernel, lomgela outside outside organizations, ya diregal sabel mo lusewa ra ablurbela, PPUC, ma ablurbela, girel segidh plan, lmo wal sabel mo mnauritsa segidh 100% ra 22. Igidha Presidente aigel walgora usingel girela segidh. Usiltame, ndiregal walgora se tal aigal urerel, ndiregal gor a amnamosbel ngaringa aganekson ngi, mra lubeng gor a kladengi, ma igidh butokol tretan, ya sabel alvor a PPUC, et sabel guk mo sabel guka sisa PPUC, mba ngel manidra PPUC ra tirgel aladuror, wa sing magrabol channel, igidh ngesura, tegni al assistance lmo ra PPUC, lmosbel improve aladuror. Segidh, enga diregal wa sing mo sabel auror, lomgela sel borda PPUC, laltame, mlosbel aigel guk kosa, ngel aigel borda. E mororol obentir, ndiosiltame tegidh plan, wa segidh amgarang ngua ablurbela, mra lmo 100% ra sel 100% lngara renewable energy, ildiagadanga uspelalu. Mmoro lomgela borda, nding wa sing angirel mo hot, e mororol obengela borda, lmo ngel wa sing ngra igel mo sorir, ma igel moktegartir, e mororol obentir, lmasel anaen aigidh. Roguil direksion raborda, ngua PPUC, lmo segidh. Tretan, ma kura adingul segidh e Presidente, tal gamiti diregal mlosbel lo mgodongora, engal Ms. Mursay lmera hiring, mta mla ngar ya mlera hiring e Presidente, kawal Presidente Okon, sa diregal mne attendra sel hiring, ma Senador Sangaria Senador diregal Senador Kuartei, Senador Sungino, ma diregal Senador Andrew Tabelwal. Segidha, diregal mla sel hiring, ma kpanilwa sing amal ne butoka alsad, ndigu mra, wa sing alsumtirgal mne attendra sel hiring, ma diregal members agamiti diregal mosoril, ma ida igel mla blakto tal report, ndiregal sabel mo ed. Ndinga amal omral, wa se alsum, mukdomo sabel lgonngi ngi, lmo daltal borda. Enganga ngonngi mosur, ba igel full tur, mngel ki da ni apointe el mori. Ediagamodaroktel, ma diagamodulwa siobaringi, ni mo uleng mo kanflik. Mbai sel girel mle girel siobaringi, segidhal aladiregal mokpart ra abol kaidla, kaid ringi, lmosbel mo ma igel ngi, lso lmen sabel moswira PPUC, mo omita igidh lngaswira. Tal tokora a solar energy, e Presidente, kada ngaringi, lwasin, lma ngel wa set tal sel planerigid, alsum mlamol, mlangara, ategidh, wa segidh dividaute, me private gombali merur. Ya kunda senadaxal mo sabel realisesel, wa set tal ana denki, ma mral morio. Segidh, tigel enga igidh Ms. Mursay, wa sing mosi akrand, walubingodo ra outside, lmen ngaseu. Ilmo longutmukla, egak, kunda segidh, alamral amonoswira PPUC, ma ablurbela, segidh moktegal amral mo 100%. El mral, msa sel ngalsa ngse la, aral adengil, mo girel mora aladra bulum. Igidha Presidente, ma kamiti malo olngitra tal rangalawal, mo sabel lgonngetari will report, ma dvor a resolution, ndiregal sabel mo ngera confirmation, engal Mr. Charlin Mursay. Ya ngaringa, ni dil member attendra sel hiring, ma lubeng ni dil member sal longutmukla, do ilal aigal, martal gamiti report, please help. Sula Presidente.
Sula Senador Mariur, Senador Sangabau.
Salé, Presidente, mera sulala Chairmanra will report tringi. Nyaga, nyaga questionerak, malungil smodiak, diregal goramle odakasigal attendra hearing, ra invitation, ra Chairman, ndi, akunda sing, mlo goras, smodi segidh, kuaseng considering a background ringi, ra guk lesang, alsel gan tribut, elmo tegidh. Ilguka mo adaborda Palau Public Utilities Corporation. Kunda sing mal, nakatakul segidh, guka expertise ngira, my experience ngira, tokor environment, considering a tegidh tokora nationally determined contribution, sel NCD regid, giredal mo, girela tokor renewable energy, ma kunda sing mal appropriate. Acti again, Mr. President, I know her personally, having worked with her for many years. Kunda sing mal aktiven, ndiregal swadal, misal, mrtal borda. Namutoka aigal hiring, etal borda, chelaboy, tirgal bebir aboard member, awadilmuk, mmo modi ogudiyek, masitirga tokuk, tingasel dilmuk, tokuk ngra omsodirm. Akumra kuashe as a board member, ing semkamitragau, ing tiadegal gorakibak, ngara, Mr. President, mung, aigal namutoka lhearing, I'm really disappointed sel pomkto ngokl. Altsukumka kamitragal, triisel mora tokoi. Make yourself involved, make a decision, girela future ablurbela. I hope, knowing Ms. Mursay, akmal confident kuashe alabonging, ing mral fuling mo part ra decision making, hopefully, igel guk kurel begotmuk, ma mral help ablurbela, ma aktirgal mal mokngela Chairman, ma gamiti olngita support, girel engal namini. Sulam.
Sulam e Senador Sangabau, Senador Isal.
Mr. President, dia kadragamiti, di nuriatel legal, depsatyal, sel giregat nar tribu, sel kilsal gorak mal, mlarungur ngir tal appointment ta tiagid. Engal dedil, engal Ms. Mursay, akmal goraklo, aklage gigeri ngira tokora climate change, ma environment, ya kunda swapi PUC, albagra aral alu, uspel a danger, agsori, alternative energy source, i.e. solar plant will be fixed, maybe there are some other stuff. Akwaro, kunda swasingal, Galdila attaramo mover. Asida PPUC, mral oigidh, lmo segidh alternative energy, kuda mral mooroida fossil fuel, emral menter, environment terigid, serklibgalal, ma healthiness ngi. Emral dulu li tal denki somehow, lmo terigib cheaper et tal fossil fuel, uspel ngi, egan namo berigil, loguvidh ra. Segidha, mal gorak, pilte ngir tokora, alset tal hiring, e mal mo, do sias support, lngagal, lmo ngiring. Kuda nimisadra alternative energy, mangalan klel, mangalan klel, finality da solar, mad or big project, pro regal di gar obleel. Maybe there's some other stuff out there that we could also look into. Sula Mr. President.
Sulam e Senador Isal, diganod, Senador Kuartei.
Sula Presidente, tal ala malungilita sils, siraromarogui senatorsa, ti du li taleng, goramaya ablulblaktaq ra, audesuayal, namral traklosei. Ngaringa effort ra PPUC ra laltame, lmo raise arala water and waste water, 500%. Ti du li segidh, Mr. President, len sen de ula modi alotar bela, wa kidha sen de improve ra aigidh le sewer system ablurbela, ne project ra TT, ldahter gumaangayang ilumi. Mmamasel segidh, effort, Mr. President, kunda swalngal namini, wa sing, aigedh lmo gurgiklen, tomolmol turn off aradabela, revert el mora igidh. Old ways, uspel atang, ma mospel a, aigal uspel kalswear system, ing indabel, ma riangbal affecting environment, ma heldar adabela. Mkunda sing mal appropriate, seriously, transidera kan namini in the face, aigidh tokoi, mal dimomoa. Dimomoa sel economic part tringi, obes, wa sing a effect ra social social effect tringi mwa ngara, especially sel neuwalala, am neuwalala tokor aigidh ma environment. Sulam.
Diganod, Senador Mariur.
Presidente, akwadil mutel di edel, wa singa mal mal dilku, wa singa kadiganaral guk dingera, oratel tal PPUC. Akti, dimilsat tegidh, tal gukora kabitmentar bela, wa sing oigidh lmo 100% renewable, bait 22. Wa sing manganga, alabongen, sabel mororol, lomgela management ra PPUC, ldirgal, mes aigel ngalsa ngse araduror. E osiga ngesol men, lmoser triidh auror. Siltan, ngaringa, ldeli, tokwa mne rillan report, tal abiltsa Senador Kuartei, mra se mmo aset, mosigar ollela, aseral mra, angesar, mrala imli, ke msa dulu li, mo ngil. Igidha, mba ngel wa sing ala amirul, wa sing tiaga angidh ngasa klela, aral mra, aigel, aral mra, one system lngara outside, auror maidrai. Mmamasen tiaga dil ngesar ma imli, na aigel rogui, aral mra outside, ra ngadiaal ngal, lomgeltal system lngara auror maidrai. Mes segidh, aladiregal atta challenge, sel ki damolbangei, lobentir aradra PPUC. Segidh, la gie Presidente, mne tatshinga Kuartei, ndigumasosen ta ata isul, diregal mulbado sa PPUC. Tal tokor adengi, rillil, dimo sisiuwa, arala denki ra Belau rokir. Marua, eh, ngal marua, briliu, mngayoura, wal, mla nikla expense, etirkaoltakalu, lmo ngurur, ta aigal denki bu, ra igel bulu. Mal nikla expense guk mora, tirgel oktiagal, ngara, aigel bulu, la degal enough, lka be, aigel expense etir.
bay, yel expenses tir. Mal mlo kloak, gamplena blu, loasegida, asapsadai, se yel, aral mra yel bulu, yel dengira yel bulu. Melagume se tiang alorur, ngal sumo tuukti increase, aral mra, aral mra, irai, oror, masuer. Eseltan, mle balungil, ay gel aral mra, yel bulu, kudukmo angara, adjust etyal, etyal aral, aral ma. Akwaro, duli segidel, yegida la mo meeting, ma PUC ra, next week, akmengdi regal bol sipedel ngayegidel, da polsipedel mo odhurtir. Esaltat, la mral, soril, wega berakost, tir, ndigida diregal mde ngel, loasia, tiabe la, diregal mal mtausur, laltaim. Ma ki damle mogil, adhugid, tir, sumo kli mogil, buktiakalsal, mo brao, del mor adra blum. Kwa disakal, ma eda yegidel togora aral mep, president, sula.
Sumo, diganod, tir gerrogul, gonget, etyal standing komitir report, eleven dash one five four, alduoy. On talk, namai, floor leader.
President, na rogis, yegidel, yegidel, reportingra standinga miris, utolo, orio, tel ngar sel nine, maten, dabora bill calendar, dabora, first reading, move the passra first reading, a senate bill, eleven dash eighty six.
Komkoramal meudel, washe segne, si da motion namdung esegne, bodon tirakler gama, ivetaitol.
Senate bill number eleven dash eighty six. Bill for not to amend tar el forio of the Palau National Code, to provide additional funding source for the operations and management of the medical referral program and services covered under the national health insurance. Tel dosmola, mmlodra tar el forio of Palau National Code, el memotmo kara, el moriya dalila odhouden mora unngil, sel medical referral program, diregal mora, yel services rinya, lga ber a national health insurance. Tel dosmola, bitut se rinya, president, senate, lo conspaulis, pay request.
Siethsel ol dasul molla, longit tamlay, mgedamo tabadi, ma ngariya, swalmi gakamint telme, mandiyage, senator Mariur.
Washe, president, akumde loasit ya la, masan ngin, ma gamitira, a held, ndigumral loaseng algeydel, odhodur, ngin algeydel mogil, omesa, egampera, yel services, ra ygal, referral, ma ygal, ngara taiwang, ma horiping. Len, ma gume, loashe, etyal insurance, adejal giril, gogo ngarala, etyal medical referral program, azblede create tringi, lobengeela, hospital, etirikel mo, waal goordinator, maluven tomo, teera, momadalasel, yel referal, referal del mora horiping, mar wataiwang, ah, news, maluven, ngariya, klaudinger tir, a heldel, adra hospital. Mungora, acti, ngulmoseyegi, president, olngitrasel komitil, omesengil, wasialsukum, ngdya ga, ngaraltel mal, etyal udoudel, dualas tringi, etyal dirigal mle, mokte ngayamora, mora muvodel, yel da, marar ngil, mor tir yegidel. Togora, medical referral, ma kusumin, dya ga, temal, edluutul, mo hospital, adol afandrangi. Dimla gongil, edo duol merigi, den stop, mle, ah, odhoudre ngi, abajete, mu buringil mora. Insurance, ah, ulmela, adoraiset tiang, tilmla ospe, ah, odhoudra insurance, etakal giril mora, yegidel togora, using. Acti, no yegid, mde ngel, wasialbora, senator Quarte, namo sumo rulil, mor sel, maral nyavungil, mokte ra, etyal program. Sola, president.
Senator Isal.
Mister president, akwa, otia, bisbe shedragal diwa, vice president, trigida len. Sel domesha history, a health care insurance, blur bela, eng ituka, ongerung, ongedey, ongeim, ongelol, ongevid, ongeyalolbi, rinyamataoy. That's how long it took for Palau to enact the law, a health insurance. Sel domesha selidotra NCD, over a two million, he only took a one breathing, one rider, ri mara kaudhodra ten percent, ra dhol, el mora, NCD. Ndegi salah, si ngaram ngariya, ogodod, se yegida, bebe nga tkatra, health care fund. Ngaram, mandya, motmozra NCD, ngariya, million dollar, galgi, ebek, three months, ngadi ogodod, mral mul. Obontsebe edel, ma ogodod, NCD, mor Olympic, Pepsi, mal, arabla, Phillipine, mal, araa Ertra, Bagabilioli, kela, eh, diogodod, NCD, memelama, tkatra, etyal health care fund, ndirga, ndirga ngalga, ebora, ebora, source, lmedya, da ogodod, ngi, il really we use it. Vice peace, maroeden, what we doing, ti amal, ti amal, diha, a two point five percent contribution, a health care fund, ma etyal taxadhol, ma rom. Ki da, bayosial, deurol, kasi, mgera mogila benefits, aradlo, mora gurul. Mgera mogila, arala garm, egadi ogodod, ma yel, expensive garm, aradlo, mo, mora gurul, emei, ya after a few months, ndiya, karir. Esti, let's keep Palau once, a smear, ma muvodel, some happiness before they die. Me gulu lugu, good idea, at help, ay gal, develop it. Ndimse gadoora, NCD, eh, ngal, misa, a minister a held, ma mora, dengi, ma personal dengi, ma kaskelel, ma kaskelel, ma kaskelel. La, mprueita, ana, divio prarik, il po, mukte, brin. Able unfounded liability, etyal insurance, groupable issue, ni ma SS, ma pension. Do you see, ti, ti omorur, exactly doing, exactly what happened, dimora pension, ma SS. Maybe not this year, maybe not ten years, but maybe twenty years down the road. Sola.
Sola, senator Sangbau.
President, na ma aktrigal, prevention, sangay, maden seta, balorur, ngayagamiti, mister president, bay, instead ra, channel odhoudel mora, medical referral committee. Akpa, omorak kuasigad, mgerangi, mogugi, sel medical savings, agontra, de se, ngara prevention, sel omoguia, wudela, admelbol gargik, ngara, osongel, embay unngil, ndiak dobat, etyal mora, endra product, sel moldurok, sel deba, malsmear, emoldurokra. Yegida, omosindel, mora, esaoth patient, aradlo, heldil, amol ngara out patient, ma toospe, etyal medical savings, agontirtir. Mga, gue, omor, president kuaseng, bay, algeydel, lobat, etyal udoudel, omogu, gora, le even, may gal, medical savings, agontra, aradlo, ndigal, given, ra klungela, expense ra gurul, ma wudela, aradlo, mosois, va gegray. Ma bay, algeydel, channel, etyal udoudel, help, medical savings, ra, el mora, gensae, mora ngaranklen, ra bay, dobat, etyal mora, sel kuasigad, kudomara, sel, mongling, mal digal sipedel, ngiredol, ba, gal, aradlo, mora gurul, outside. Segida, mister president, ngukma, osingel, algeyel, etyal, al gukka, uldasul molla, ma aktrigal, de olngitra, gamiting, la mo extensive, orelen, ma ti, odersi, segidel gukko ra, reservation ngal, algeyel, le, omorak, pasia gamitirga, motmal, osingel, omesengi, yel, motma, ge, utmakla, unngil, akumdaseng, algeyela, blur bela, ma aradlo, ospe, etyal, gurul. Sola, mister president.
Senator Quarte.
Mister president, etyal, akmamasada, ugul desu, mlet, mikita, bol, bora, tarakamiti lakbera, a held, ma. Di, president, ngariya, taravil, na paset, etal lay, mle esgra, health care fund, lo asikabomomesa, ra coverage, ra hemodialysis, edigal bomomesa, coverage, ra, yegidel doaseng catastrophic cases, suma, adam, mora gurul, le, eh, el mara, gurul, sel per premium affront, mo afford a yel gar, ndi ga, gaurul, ringil, mermarela. Ongerunge, mister president, akumde ngel, loasigal, ndigal, la, el mo creator, hospital authority, mbose dal ala, na, ay yel, urerela, ay yel, doasen secondary, etyel, monying, etyel, mora referral, away from primary care, ay yel, luru, repabrikel. Ay, yel, mo, clear, old swed, lela, yedi, the model, ayam, twenty years from now, osisil basio. Ma, ngel, loaseng, kudon, mle, arub necessity, a gobi, da otpi, l'amo, merula, bebe ra decisions. Ndegi, yegidel, decision, agal, algeydel, mlemol, mep, mister president, ndi alse edel, mlemol, men, ma di abra, odhoud, ma benefit, ma, a medical necessity, ra, ar tokta, algeydel, ulia, a medical decision, eh, ogodod, ah, ngariya, aradlo, decide, objective li. Ma, olngitel, loashe, me bodurut, segida, long term, el vision, el gutmakla, medical referral, le, al altaim, el es we speak, a medical referral program, ma klo problem ringi, eh, ngariya, aradlo, etyal, gora, algeyela, adris. Len, ngariya, aradlo, mla, mora horiping, etyel, waiting room for three, three days, and I think, a mde ngay. Ma, ti, olngitel, loashe, memelak, dabor, segida, yegida, domesha, sel mal, mral, mato, maluven, turgon, el badhatmakla, referral, mungir, arogu, la, eh, ndi aluega, ay yegidel gora, kuashe, loaseng, muldesuwe, almo se, ma, ti, olngitos, sel gamitil, omesengi, bol, adrodr, ay yegidel, rogwe, do tabrisel, mral unngil, el, gora, way, al muldesuwe de rogwe, algeyela, medical referral program. Sola.
Senator Talamson.
Sola, senate president, akume se etyal, bili, mister president, ma bole difitera purpose, etyal, health care fund, le, tiang, amobosel, medical, medical referral program, a minister a held and human services, el mora, a health care fund, emakner, ali, mongra la, yel facilities, ma equipment, el ngara, yegida, gakru, se blu, ra krel bela, edya gal, el fogusel, girela, implementra, a insurance, motir, aradre bela, tir ospe tringi. Telariya, over a three thousand, el adlo, el, no a two thousand, three hundred, el ad, or maybe three thousand, madhunet, sixty years old and over, ma disabled, el tir a malospe, ta yegidel, medical health care fund, etiang, amnava, eungela, a minister a held and human services, el nyagot, l'appropriate, el, minister, algeyela, over sit, etyal, etal medical patient, el mora, krel bela. Osisil, taim, mister president, omisel gamitil, momsubert, tiang, le, sel, medical referral committee, a diregal, wal blabultur, adronolela, tokta, ma, a patient, etyal insurance. Ma tokta, amna, atara, kli, paseng algeyela, aradlo, gurul, ra krel bela, olengospe, amre del gurul, segida, gamitira hold, ra aradlo, ndiaseril, fly, wa yegid, gaminda, isen, ar tokta. Ma, gume, ra sing algeyela, gamitil, mongra, etiang, ndiabdivol, omesha, etyal, el bil itself, ndigal, omesha, etyal, hot program, ngarau ulmen, hold, ra aradlo, ndiaseril, mral, tiri ngatian, mo gai, makmath. Ma, tiang, akwara, a unngela, temel, bill, lorganside, rinya, ble, a senate, len, long overdue, algeydel, adris, etyal, medical referral, a program, a health insurance, ra blur bela. Sola, mister president.
Senator Aldebel.
Sati, al, president, aktrigal, dimobentrag, bekl, aradlo, ma, adhuy, diregal, gukti, bukutarsal, desu, ti, aligana, first reading, selabora, komitir, at least, yegidel, al gukul, desu, bol, sel, gora, adaktage, labor, obsubel. Mister president, ak, ak, demongitra, gamitil, momsubert, tiang, kmasabadi, regal, bol, omesha, sel, legal implication, etyal, wal, the transfer, ngara, a medical referral program, lo banmo, sa, NHI. Len, algeydel, omesha, sel, la, me create, etyal, medical referral program, kmasin, tiang, ulamakna, angulamakna, insurance program, alulamakna, a minister a held, el mo, omanit, etyal program. Le, olakmal, gola, loashe, mister president, etyal, medical referral program, a design, el, lo ngaseur, etirikel, aradlo, mosme, mora gurul, hospital, a hospital, yegida, momode, asel, gutmocla, yel, treatment, el require, mor tir, ma ulmela, mor refer, tir, mora outside, el mosiga, gurul, outside. Mlemol, mal, tira, mlemol, mal, patient, ra, ministry of held, a hospital. Mal sumo, wa, segida, mister president, eng, yegida, diregal, manek, kmasing, kudospe, a, statistics, ma information, el girir, smear, ma yel, statistics, aradlo, ma referral program, mo, include, nyay, yel, information, raq tir, ma yel, bek, pedengela, trentengela, raqt, el, aradlo, mo, osiga, treatment, el giril. Ay, yegiril, ngarawan, department, eh, segida, il, department, ay yel, matmocla, yegidel information, ol tov, den, mera, statistics, den, mera, leadership, especially, olbi agolom, o visa president, mmo, basa, edel, ospe, yegidel, deyra, emega, a decision, el giril, a future, ay gal, program, a, a, medical referral program, a, a, togora, togora funding. Yegida, mister president, akumdas, adhuk, tuuk, se yegidel, ngara, al gulm sa, for this case, in, medical, etyal, insurance, NHI. Yel, al, bol, lo, opira, yel, information, mle, bay, bol, ulia, aradlo, bol, la, feel it secure, ma, ulbel, la, confident, etil, giril, a, kabel mental, maintain, information, eti, especially, raq tir, ma, yel, gukto, gurur tir. Ma ulmaka, akumdas, kmasing, algeyel, ngariya, mo, omsubel, segida, guk legal implication, etyal, dorur ngi, including, sel, mooyul, milgetmo, ngal, algeydel, mo, mosasik, kmasing, sing, otirikla, la, ma mokte, ra, etyal, yel, program, badhatmakla, ulbing, ndiak. Yegida, mister president, swadal, gadi, odarsal, gukti, uldas, bol, se, lakamitil, mo, omese, sula, etyal.
Senator Isal.
Aklimutel, mo, repeat, ato, tiro, il, ngar amal, clear, aul do, ra, ngalal, etal lay, next decade, Nibrans, ay yel, teki, ra, yel, tril, play, ngara, Hawaii, ma Taiwang, ma, Phillipine, ngal, alen. Adi, isil, ngar, khot, engat, etal, let's see, a refunding, shakma, oywi, and this is what I'm scared of. National Health Insurance continued to play an important role as a pooled fund, meaning, ay gal, udoudlo lap, available, mora ngara. Yedil, ngara, IE, management, ra, yel, building, ngara, yel, etal. Etatot, link, antwerin, mo intention, ra, ala, be the creator, ngi, by eight plus fourteen. Ekmul, ashe, took our incurred cost of these island referrals, including inpatient, which has helped subsidize some of the cost, and is the worst. May, ngariya, ogodod, RNC, dima, ogodod, RNC, misa, minister a held, el wangaramo, il urut, ra, yel, play. La, khot, urut, ra, in, ogodod, RNC, fund. Memelak, khot, urut, ngi, ngar, mal, mde ngel, loaseng, ngariya, ngar, la, kabel mental, giril, ay gal, play. I'm not running away from that. I'm just saying, you've seen the wrong fund. Fora, maklob, lulu, dhor. Yel, diogodod, ngal, loashe, tiang, ma, ra, a increase, la kost, dengi, going forward. El oral, mo klo, el, la, cha, simort, etal, ten percent, ra dhol, ma rom, ma health insurance, ek unfounded liability, tir, pargra, amadat, as we go forward. Segida, mister president, kudona, experience, rinya, ti, ulmoro, en, health care fund, deka, problem, ringi, ki, di, ne, roed, ir mark, ogodod, ra, taxadhol, ma rom, mo. Akul, ulmoro, akul, ndiak, wa pension, ndiak, wa SS, especially pension, le, ki, di, ne, roed, shisba, ogodod, ndiak, wa pension, edlo, to, to, ogodod, gi, merela, al seals, engnestan, fifty million, aradlo, ngal, direct, depasit, el mora, action. Segida, we, 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 experience it, to, C S W P, vice mark, edungo, urut, RNC, el malo, ar ngir, al, ngani, urut, RNC. Sola.
Senator Udim.
Sola, mister president, mal, nitasilze, ti, mal, di, ngar, khot, ro, mngiole, mister president, olemintro, deseni, bay, request. Ndi, sel, gora, saladung, gwa, mortib, ngayakan, fusion, le, akumdas, amal, nakataklo, on Ndisekwek salado, ngua motira, niyakan fusion, le umdasel amal blo taklo, onti la Presidente waseng, ti al uldasol mola, osiga, sesel ten percent ra LCD, amomulut, yegidul dasol mola. Maktonitra gamitibol domesengi, bol a page two, reselera eight to nine, malmol moti al program, and other services related el mura medical referral program. Alin ngariya medical referral program, nganiya medical referral gamitie. Itrigal medical referral gamitie, triget toktan waseng gangmamal ra adandike. Medical referral program, umsao de ti al program. Mong tiang alin tokal odod, ma tokal services, ndirek al taro uldasu, girel domesengi, umsamo okri, Mr. Presidente, le malbitoga, yegide appropriation sen la referral gamitie, gidirek al noriya wal ngalsangasela, ulma wal, dinngosongasao odod. Mong umdasu, ndirek lungil, bodongil, umsangan, le ndu, lala gada kmasing, adaglungil. Ndikumdasu ti al hospital system, abralo shpe a help, bol dungil, mka takla ngara alira adala alsel, malaka bol kausispe, adro ospe a ne, so, wal motoma adonole, yegide kausispe adonole, adro la, ba yegal ngara urol. Sulan, Mr. President.
Sulan, Senator Udim, Senator Quartey.
Kome, Mr. Presidente, multungaulan ending. Ti abla takla yegide, ti al altame, gada adresi, nganiya, sel supplemental budget. Ti al, ti yegide laa waseng yegel ten percent, el maya syntax, algo hole, entobago, mong pera permio, ma trigel, senior citizens, ma disabled, a yegito ra bekaral mo. Kadamangial wasese, bol marika yegel, wa yel derengel, a revert el more operations la Ministry of Health, rel altame by law. Ti al, ti al proposal laa sendiak, me malaka lo ba la Ministry of Health, de remain ngara health care fund, support yegal obis. Yegid onti la Presidente, ti olinitel ngar ti al, ma kli. Ding ak malmol mal waseng, a medical referral program, angar alela Ministry of Health. Ti al, ti al insurance, angar alela health care fund. Ma laa blad introduces, eh, sanal astal government, te diril wase, separate yegamal, al ngariya confusion, alla angari la exist. Makmalmol mal waseng, ngirel, ngirela yegel ulu koe, Senator Flor Lider. Ngirel mo clarify waseng, through a taanga preview, el mura medical information ra ader bela. Ministry of Health and Human Services, angar alela health care fund, adi omesa benefit, oltova yegel odod, e trial improve a benefit coverage ra roguil, ra. Ti amal blak takla, ti malmol mal waseng, sel bol marika supplemental, e ti yegid agot adresi, nganiye, ding ngirel mo subitiam, malaka delut, el momutar ngi, le ngirel mo understand waseng, a omunga, gurul, el unsa entitil deka expertise ringi, ingoriya, a tora takla ringi, wa el altame, donaseni ra huri ping. Sulan.
Sulan, Senator Quartey, Senator Udim.
Mr. Presidente, amal, first reading, ndiak debate, Presidente, monde de longaseura, sel mo gamitil mo bat yang. Ah, sel lastel hearing, Mr. Presidente, lo bangela health care fund, ti al lungoraa, ngi, amlar yangasangasela, blaira, huri ping ma outside. Ti al bol a page two, laa eight to mora nine, retegidul dasol mola, umsao de other services. Mong taro option, waseng gukti umsao de logistics and transportation and shelter, mura adesme, el dijal bol sisra medical record ra ad. Makwa agidu ulgore, wase yakmesal ulgore, a daityorio, mterul dasol mola, waseng taro option, shpe la guktra itsin silma motmokar ngi. Tlinen free a medical records ra adre, yeg private information, yegidil aden mo involva yegide, a gire la balis, umsalkot obkubavon, balsel kabelmenta. Sulan, Mr. President.
Ndige ngoda. Sukman ndige ngoda, etirgir roguil gongert ti al uldasol mola, ra kotlo niveldu oi. Hmm? Omtok? Namai, ngariya guk modu, uldesweer, mak assigner ti al mura gamitira held, e mal, a yegel ganse na ader roguia, mal di ngariya merit zirngi. Bak payo mesengi, wasegle bay bol uule, ti yegide uldasol mola, polsebe edel motma roguia desang, Senator Quartey, mogdonia Minister of Health del may, eda askar ngi, a yegel bek roguil ganse, yegide girel tiang. Mong ngariya ngoda, uldu uldasu, eda adabay zirngi, wasegol, laha bol wa iset tiang, mal uve bol wa isay. Logi wa yegel recommendation ra, gamitira held, ma gidrogu. Senator Isal.
Ak ti, butulal asta sentencing, malu ngari. I hope, tiang adial beginning, ra guk mo, krapada the time, e ukta bo ngi, a service or hospital, e oltovza odod a NHI mo supporting. Once you start it once, it can come back again. Esegida, me point na the Mr. President, ogodol daol, mo pen ringi, mura, a yegel blind, ma yegel other services. Genara, akteal stobe ngi, monbu la ra. Imi liyida, pasala. Sulan.
Okay, malungil, ma yegel uldasu roguia, Senator Quartey, bol swede lo daqta ge bodagad ngaringi, bay motel ledel mogdonia minister, me, esubdir a yegel uldeswe, ma yegel dumdasu, el laha motmokl, mutarwusu. Flor Lider.
Presidente, na rokia first reading, do tabora yegel bill, second reading, ndiak ngari. Madabro adur reading, ar ngi, sil one bill ngara adur reading, ma, mumda pasra, adur reading, Senate Bill eleven thousand forty-two S T one.
Sila motion, namdungesegun, ma kler gam iwe title.
Senate Bill eleven thousand forty-two S T one. Bill for not to establish the process by which to settle traditional title disputes and for other purposes. Te uldasol mola, adi mo, matmokla ra, el bodogiyungi, umsabe edel gor a, sma yegel mondrenge la tora adui. Te uldasol mola, abidudzur ngi, Senator Stevenson Che Quartey, a late Senator Chisagita, ama Senator Gray Mariur.
Flor Lider.
Esegide, Presidente, title, Bill, motion, angar bran, momlani, adur then final reading, di wera, dabo, enterter, amend motion, Mr. Presidente, nganiya flor amendment, offering a Senator Sungino ma Aldabel, mada, bad enterter, sel flor amendment. Pakmok, mada, adopter sel flor amendment, la offering a Sungino ma Aldabel.
Senator, tablo amendment, kamlut.
Tablo flor amendment.
Kamlut lo mesed, re number dem.
Esegide, offering a Sungino ma Aldabel, avol amendment one.
She ngara page four.
I see. Oh, nyakmer badu, ngusel, offering a Senator Inavo, ngara page two, sel line two to three, the three, three ngi, mo amendment one. Esel flor amendment ra, Sungino ma Aldabel, bol amendment two. Di wangi.
Bol wa isay.
Ma wa isay, kumbada, badu, adopter sel flor amendment one.
Si da motion, namdungesegun, ma wera dabonge, laboriya discussion, e don tira Senator Inavo, bol baskidha umsodet sel amendment number one. Senator Inavo.
Sulan, Mr. Presidente, ki da, am u, entertain ra, dur reading, Senate Bill eleven thousand forty-two S T one. Ti al Senate Bill, eh, Presidente, mo, oruli, mong mor ngiya, atetele la, do, serel, a yegel, el mundai ra adui, ra alsel, ra blu bela. Mong, ti al Palau, Traditional Title Dispute Act, tawyal, el ki da, el al, ti al Senate Bill, mo, gutmakla, mong umsabel, ngarii, sel la tulasing mediation, mor ngi, kado gutmakla mediation, el mor ngi, ra wera, adabo ra orta. Ma ti al amendment, ah, mo, flor amendment, ah, mo, amender sel line two, el mo line three, page two. El ra ay, el ngiya, kulasay, any dispute of traditional title that arises within any clan in the republic must first be resolved to traditional dispute resolution within the clan. Ndii, ki damdingel waseng, batok, el mundai ra adui, a dekal dil, ngara alsel, a iya, kabli, al babylet, tuwok mota, adal, ulu mundai. Mong ti al uldasel, ti al change, ah, di, mo kulasay, trigel kau mundai la, ndiag dil bol, tulase, trigel, ngara kabli. Terel kau, ngi, dil kau mundai la, damusabiril mo, o, turutegide el process, ma, orta girel mo, o iset, tige hidrogu la. Mong kora di, change, er sel waseng, within the clan, al mo between the factions, le sel babylen, ndiag dil, ndiag dil, adra, osisil kobli, la kau mundai a di. Al babylet, ngariya, roda la, aden, gukme, ulu mundai ra adui. Mong di make sure, coverage, ti al laa, mo include ra ngi, di la, el ngiya, sual, ulu mundai ra, adui, title dispute. Mong esegide amendment, eh, mal simple, eh, Mr. Presidente, sulan ra ti al.
Discussion, Senator Isal.
Mr. Presidente, akmal respect ra Senator Inavo, amal unil, malora, ogodol daol amendment. Is narish egis, itswede, ndige yegi, tri sentencing, ak ti al amendment. Ti yegida ishiu, ti a ospe, ablo gal, abliliyo, ishiu. Abliliyo, ngariya, a histir ngi, yibol iwa di, kau mundai ra adui. Mong ninety percent ra, almost hundred percent ra, durabliyo, a yegi, mal mura orta. Te sing, ndaklimer, singa, durabliyo, a palseti, ngi, outside the court. A yegi, bil, olspenda, budam, mura orta, edis, ngariya, ukmoat, sma momagi. Ela nga la, akmal baktak waseng, any dispute in a, of traditional title, se yegida la, de la. Sen momesese, la amendment Inavo, e ngomul, strike a royal dispute, la line three, e mirko yamotabel, underline the disputing functions involved in a dispute of traditional title. Mong esegide, naloyang a function, a risengli, abliliyo, amno, vedala, adro olbir ngi, etirgir rubak, a, a mo outu takla, in tovda iwatash ti ader del waseng, tirgai, rubak, tirgai, yegil, artial function, tirgai, yegida, am nomsi si. Mong ndi amla kalisisi, le bo raklobak, ma kabli, del osao do ngi, te dim no ra ort, il one function against the other. Esegide, a, a piti ngi, a, daa yegal rogu. Ti awel la, e guk, peta, taro mangi, ngara kli, guk medum, guk, kongi, gide, mura taro, a liber, ra taro atro. Le gada, ma, roe, dra dispute, trad- traditional, e ba, asino, ela gada kuqara, tige gukon, a functione ti, al washto, al watam, al watam. Namu diagal, namu diagal, traditional, namu function. Le, ar, adi amla ga ort, ndi amla a function. A ulam, namu riya function, ngi, namu riya ort, namu riya group or one, or two, or three. E ngara mo, e ngel mo, girel, la adro roe, a di, adro roe, whether we like it or not. El adi amla, mal function. Mong esegide, ela nga fake ngi, abad amendra la, mal diobat, yegadeb, sentencing. E bol gosa ishiu ra, a guk to, mla motmokra in the past, le guk til begis, a taro function, el mo question a taro function. E plasi, akumdasu, a yegide, toye, Mr. Presidente, orienta, a will public hearing, le impacted a family, ma history, ma recite ra adra, ablu, tokunigida, ader bela. Akmal, respecta Inavo, dieng, abai, tiang, abai, nganiya, girel bay, lemga math. Nga dada, mla mo roe, de, kado kala di, ngara ort, ndiag, ndiag, omel, eh, 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 clan, eh, bligh, omel function. Esegida, piki, sulan.
Senator Songo.
Sulan, Mr. Presidente, umdasay, a, a usao de ngi, direk al gora mo, telgib, el, wa, gora mo, yak support ti yegide flor amendment. Sel ba, do, saadre ngi, mla mo, disputing factions, e mla mo, diaga dil, gablee, mla mo, sabel, sel klobak, le diregale ma umsao de ngi, e diregale ma asabel, la, lechet, ngal, adamo, member olbir, ah, sel bulu, mong guk another faction. Ma tiablam iri di, ra alsel, a gablee, e ma umsao de ngi, ta klobak, ti al bulu, e ma umsao de ngi, diregale, etiraro guil, di, ma paril moti al ishiu. Ma, akumdasu, gi damlesu, adal intenta ti al, umdasu, sel ne intenta original, kasi, me, ngutti al, mor sel ulel, esegide, kasi, bo ra, gablee, malo saadre ngi, bal gukil diyel, wa orte, bol saadre ngi. Ndiba, al bol, togal paril, gukme, rubak, al sorir, tirgai, yegide, gukle, me ti al, be es, madan, gablement, guk sorir, kasin, gai, yegi, di, a guk, somamal, chile, imam. E mla mo, gablee, ma klobak, sel bulu, ma diregale, guk, olbir, sel bulu, ma, am, zidion, ma umsao de tiang, which is, hm, kora diagal, traditional resolution, abam include a faction, and sabela, olbir abliliyo, olbir amelgiyo, ma taro faction, which is not traditional in that sense. Ma, kora, masasen, esegide, direk al, ulgore, Senator Isal, it's opening a lot of avenue, more, aden, umsao de tiang. Mr. President, where we wanna make sure that, while we solve, ringi, esegide, at the very, sel level, ra gablee. Sulan, Mr. President.
Senator Mariur.
Oy, ak tira gal, ngaka, ulamdasu, waseng, yegal roguil mundai a, adui, atovda ra gablee. Ti a ulma, gada burungil, la, sesel, noriya, mundara, umsabem, mura ngoda, functione, ndil, sugum, ti al, duya, dinga, imol, gablee, e girel, sel gablee, mo, resolve, ringi, ndiag dospe a function. Ma, umdasu, waseng, ti al amend ringi, amral, bay motomelit tiang. El adi, sel dukwaseng, tirgai, gide, adra gablee, la motmaq, e trial resolve ti al ishiu, esegide, yegala, bay, la, sabedlo, ospe, ringi, ma tira gal, gora, eh, ding, sabedlo, sabela, introduce ti al, amendment, telut, ol gora, mal, gomotil, eh, eh, tsawalan, me kloq, madangela, waseng, ngara, duya, tovda, ngara, gablee. To moterul, adha, tovde, ngi, tirgai, yegida, girel, mo, kau mundai, girela, sel gablee, mo solve, ringi. Mong alsum, ngariya, gora, muutul, gora, gamlu, muutul, gora, mars modin, mo, edugete, le, yegide, diregale, momdil, waseng, magra, guk tovde, mo diagal, ngara, gablee, eh, ma, moti al mundai. Le sumi, imoldu ya, terul, adha, toa, kau mundara ngi, e tirgiril, adha, sel gablee, te di, mo prove, waseng, ta, mral, adha, ti al gablee, ta girel, menut, kama ta, diag. Akmo sa yegide, a, a, sese, a gukoseng, ti al, waseng, diagal, gide, del, menut, erem, ngara, clan, ne, tri, ede, clan, a, oltovde, aden, ma, mulu, yegal, doi. Sulan, sulan, Presidente.
Okay, am, malungil, a, a discussion, makti, halik, gukti, o, ti al deswe, e, mergo, klot, baskmea, gadi, be esel, mengada du. Ti asel, domesengi, ngora, mulgol, girel, sel, el mundai, ra blu, ra abliliyo. Ela, mla mor ngi, a faction, ra, abliliyo. Ngarii, tirgal, ngariya, obak, ma, ulsiyas, ma tirgil, babyra, rubak, ma, guksel, legislature, ngarii, tirgil, rubak, ngara alsel. Ela, ti yegide, faction, el diagal, ngara, alsel, sel, lolbir, abliliyo, amla konger ngi, amla, me, motmaq. E mergo, e, umsao da, tegengela, ablu, ra abliliyo, which is, kado misel, ngariya, ra ngara alsel, el mla, mo, ito, tragar, gril, elat, umsao da, tegengela, yegel, bulu, la kotomtei. Plasi, ngarii, tirgil, ngariya, dispute, rtir, a yegel, ldui, o, arngul, ma. Arngul, ma, arngul, ma, ngel, ti al imo, obaklo ol. Ela, tngarii, tirgil, blal, kanger ngi, a, olbir, abliliyo, soldiers, elat, tirgal, guk, taro, faction, amla, me, eru, e mergo, e, erulia, resolution, urtil, organize, waseng, tirga, umsao da, tegengela, ablu, ra abliliyo. Ela, yegaya, faction, namu diagal, siuwa. namu di'agel siu'ang. Ndirgaga siu'ang, rubak amutl dibil emru'la resolution l'organize a kabli la ma'tlu ngalga ra alsel i gel belu. Ndiya. Ela tiya gatngel sel ngaringa abli liyo gatngel. Etobay mlai oysak saktiya belu. Ya i gaygida di'agel swad al mes a ulmagadumru tiel la il clarify emora olel la siu'ang e walmey. La sel sumgirdi mer amale ngel ermula faction engo idiya belu. Makti be'asel mulgoya ablu ra abli liyo, ela alsel sawlo'oyd le gaygida tul faction ra alsel. Mela tarah faction amwa'abrenol mom to tomngur. Ya guk tarah faction agukkuwa'abrenol mom tomngur ma i gal tubul faction amla mo'gautok yigid sel domesel ablu ra abli liyo, ela't tul faction ra alsel lomi ra belu. Ya i gal belu nga'lera rubak la omud di'agel nga'lera rubak la omi. Gabo, Senator Inavo.
Yeah, President, gomusula nga gora mal mlaa clarify tiel isyu. Di ah ulmak introduce tiel amendment ah a gira'tal mo face reality. Le selu era deborahort, ndi nga rongi la senta'ad ra nga ra al kabli la, ulmak deborahort. Le tiel duya kluklila kabli la. Mang sel nga ra gort, ndirgaga gortak mula seti'ga adra nga ra al kabli la versus ra'adra nga ra al kabli la. Malu ibete imol kabli la nga rang le ndirgaga determine gortak ma singal'ada adra nga ra al kabli la. Ma kita gira'tal omu'ar sel gotalu'ul e gira'tal masa'ma misteri ra'adra rogu ya equal opportunity. El sumto solid claim la ader sel kabli, eng sabiel mo of file ra ah ulta'ngi il wasay gama madrigal adat tiel kabli la ma agi mal, saba malmolu'ar tiel duy. Mang um gundas say ndirgaga a ulmagadagaw mondai adi'agabodan dengel wasay gada adra nga ra al kabli la. Mang we have to face our reality wasay ngtangarangia beqpa dengela garup, nga alsel tiel kabli la ela'ta di'agel di'agel roguil ader tiel kabli la ma aurele la gort amodetermin la wasay, ma tangraq mal ader tiel kabli la. Ra uera la boldul wasay, ma ta malmolu'ar tiel duy. Ma ulmaktil ma ulmategida a ulam dasal kmasingiret al kula se factions le ndirgaga bol ndirgaga determine kmasitra wat'ad ra nga ra al kabli la. Ma nga ra al kabli la ou duy tiel duy. We're starting from ground zero. Ndiva i gal mondai ra utma. Everybody nga rongi ya te'el el mo'file a claim rongi il wasay nga ha'ou utma't tiel utma. Ndia'al sabedla di exclude la wasay oh mantrina bo'ma dengel wasay gada adra nga ra al kabli la emgaro'mdula se oy kasa be'ml file ra claimer gawe'ga adi'agel be'ml file ra claimer gaw le ndi'agam ader tiel kabli la. Who determines that? Sula ngi, Mr. President. Ndii segida ulmak meru'ut tiel amendment.
Senator Ludima.
Um so le, Mr. President. Mr. President, sel ya kamitari porto'msa'adongi ulasamola ra February two twenty twenty-two. Nesa'adongi with reservation because of this dispute. Ti'le Madam Senator, mlaa introduce rongi sel line four akmul wasay akot, ema motro'okla sel duy logi wa traditional. Logi wa siu'ang, malu iben uluklups lu'ul belau. Ya sumondia sel dongi wut ti, Mr. President, wasay sel sumondia amga'igets logi wa'klu belau. Gama aso'isul mu'tal rogi'el siu'ang argau ma'klu bela ulmsa'ar garri le trira'modetermin ra siu'ang argau. A ulmak nesa'adongi tari porto'el logi wa with reservation, esel tarah mungu'tit tiya gidil lolo'el la siu'ang al mora a democratic government, beli elected government emla'mutru'da siu'ang. Mang di ngat tiya gidil line four, gundas say na sen sabedla mo interpret rongi wa say. Le a mdegrigal mora chairman suminua say, al sumo'mgom al otavta la ra bebul la siu'ang. Sen di'agel ormar de clean destroy la siu'ang. Le siu'ang atogra'ablay le wadi wa itel olbi la, Mr. President. Ra adra belu amli trigidil may, e gawa motu kya'kredensials kamiti yigada mora tetelela bi'ela ra adal mo'do'okl tyan logi wa'utma'elala. Ya gundas lo traditional lo ma i gal tetelela'klu belau, ma'klu'belau, baktakla bodagi wa'igidin ya di'agel sal mo'klu'orod, ea bodun. Edireka, Mr. President. Sel momu'tavri ya i gal blam dum ki'agora mlamo'rak tela a kablement versus a siu'ang ma traditional palau. Bl'ol sel omutu'ak kablement, unisul mu'klamondai, mo'di'akamondai, di'agak'igets eng split tablu. Mang di swagal ndiro'ta segida, Mr. President, ulmakmlan no le sel ma'klu'wr tiel ludasamola. Sula, Mr. President.
Senator Isal.
Gora imajida kutya'mola e riya dispute edi'agel tul faction, four or five for faction. The dispute ra imoldu. E gi damo'adra be'gari mer tiel mor renesergi. Ya da'abri gela di'ak'klam rongi ra a clan ma karaktera belu'belau. Ta'wo'ga asina ra a clan nga ra bulgu. Ndidi'agel ulisil imi ra clan ra belu belau, la singan nga ra member tiya clan. El baldo'oklode'stray el omesla to'ol function el gancentrate rongi lo duya iwatash rongi. Ya i gal ndibe'asel mulgoya, alamri gela mlamega sometimes a wrong interpretation ra'toy il gidil uspe e oyu'du motra'mri gela. Tul komesengi il bitang. Ilhe'ed di'agel tere. Mang sen create ra function ya uspe abli liyo again. Abli liyo setta'ra function adi emla gatalu takra sesier mu'ul. Ndia'ga imol alo tutakler mu'ul. Mlaringi ndindindindarayga estop. Ndii ulmnom sisi nga dengur ngayela a function lengut be'asel olbe'yl, be'asel number, majority, minority engo ngeltara ngul mu'ulmo. E ngi ya di emla gati mbay nga rongi a diskut ra adal goy. Engel imo amnom sisi edi emla gal dengok, ela gal engel tarah obu'ak itu't yibok ngar setta'ra function engel imo lo ba du'el lang, el pel kokitsi. Agaramri gela ove'igisun malhapi. Ya i gayda function abli liyo. Ndia'wun gada si'ga ya function isar ya function namalre'ol. Ya i gayda, it's kind of funny and it's the truth. It's happening. El di'agel dispute ya function amel gukme'el asin yanga'mam. Majority speaks, majority votes. Sula.
Senator Songo.
President, gundas say tiya, tiya blo'ob el process, gundas say gi damla magatakli tiel la il kase emlo blakatakla i gal nomre'el gukti be'it rongi de'kase, gada magotetral resolve rongi ra kabli la. Sumguk tige oborahort, esel mo'processa kasi bomgali. Tiya sel omdu kasing any disputing factions, sing gora mo'omsodela i gal kase metige roguil nga rongi a claimant tiel utma. Kamla'mo'ltu'ra ngidil ader meso'isul tiel President. Idha'tral avoid the segida, tiya sel omdu any disputing factions. Enga'at tiel gulgorengi, mlamo sabel guknga rongi a faction ra adro olbi, kasi ngayid asomam abol rubak al emmu member oben'gamam. Ma'tuguknamo tarah faction il di'agel patra clan, ndi tirga guk'el'ada na mu'tu'el logi wa'constitution urti ma'tuguknamo tarah se ilma'msa'adongi tiya. E gukkuulme'el sel klobak al sel belu, ma'tam a guk'msa'adongi sel ortop drongi rubak. Ema tirgal baktogal agukwa di'agel agri'al seti tiel clan. Agumdas sing wal san malmou lisil lisakshikte, tiya'amokte rongi a sel initial stage ma gukkl di losa'adongi sel kabli la. Al sugum mbay, ke'momsadongi kase all, ndi'asem wasay any emirgo ma'se' faction, sing ndi'agel ngiril kase all disputing factions, al sugum aktio, mesit ti'ndi'asem wasay any uspe'ra plural after say. Ngiril any disputing faction. Ma tiya'agiril sugum wa'isegaba'ik kase any disputing blay. Le blay abaisil ah di'agel ado du etirgayid ya motmaq etu'kengel mo'ntesel kabli la. Mang segida diswal mo'du ni, Mr. President, malungit ra introduce rongi kase mem bidro'ti la amendment ta'ga, la sumun sabel.
Senator Inavo.
Um, Mr. President. Ah mal understand i gal tokora siu'ang al dosa'ad, la wasay nga rongi kabli la, nga rongi aklisi etel kabli la el malut karamo malu'ra sel i gal du'ra kabli la. Ni sel blabodoru lala eh, President, e gana'mer sel democratic process. Ngirirar adro guil nga rongi atelir ra a democratic process sel mo o o te'i a gukuldaswir ma amondal ngir, la sumo nga rongi. Mang al sugum nga'ak claim wasay nga'ak ader tiel kabli la, mang ak tirgalsabe'gal momalu'ar tiel duy. Endi'aktimralme'ga wasay, ah ah iri da'ya gada di'agam ader tiel kabli la. Ndia'ag, ndi'agel sabe'mlme eh orto'ergal wasay gada tiel kabli la. I've been denied my rights ra andirala. Le nguk tirgaha pomodengel wasay gada tiel kabli la, ndi'agemirgongi eti'na ra writer nga'gal el file ra ah sel wasay nga'ak tirgala ader tiel kabli la, nga rongi aklisi e'gal. Mang I'm really con- concerned, say gi di el el under a democratic process, engiril nga rongi equal access el more arbe'klada yongi alla. A ulmak ulam das lo wasay mu'ngil adha, the change say gaygida el sin set tiel la gort amo'ol tau'tar tiel la engiril le sel mu'wi wa'igel decision ra gort, ndi'agel du'la wasay tal ader tiel kabli la. Tongral faction, el me' file ra dispute urti trige ya amral oklal ra klal let tamla prubu wasay ta ader tiel kabli la. Mang segida concern nga mandiswa'ha ah adro guya bul understand, resel wasay nga'ul mangkloutu tlel a gire'edil di'agadu'la wasay ndi ader tiel kabli la le ta'disayda la wasay ta'adat tiel kabli la. Segida questiona, nga ntanga, ntanga disayda la wasay ta'adat tiel kabli la, ta'di'ag. Sula ngi, Mr. President.
Senator Cortez.
Sula ngi, President, gundas say sel gora wa'wayal ne'uldasul wasay da domeset tiya idel tele'tael ngel ultamal porahort, el ma'msa'adra atoy. Ah o'tam, ngayra'alwa'ngi isar ang'ero nga a uligor kaswarang raswa. Eh ah sel ala'al ma'msa'ad et adal adal ka'adal mer tiel gongi rongi ya girar sa'al, ma'ngi ya radil. Ma'tam na'el wasay gama ma'ngi ya ro'adamil morti. Anding ngi'el siu'ang el ngirar sa'al nga rablay ta'ma dengi mu'ong ra rablay le tige li'ra rablay ya gundas wal wasay gima dengi magimar ra talak. Ndidi'agul ti'ra'rsil tele'tela la siu'ang. Ar ngirar di'ra to'ra rablay, letamor rablay ra damri. Ma'tam ondengi siu'ang ra damri. Masel le me'ul migedungil ado du ar ngirar sa'al emne'ki rablay adi'agel giril loldi, il waya lo oldarewa'ak rongi ngiril me'wasay gime'ki rablay, ya gimingit mu'kla i gil me'rdha'ingisuk. Segida di'yang mlamo mi'tu't ma ulmati'ang la gukti kumul wasay ah ti'amara state government ti'amnamo'ra'male ngel la debate. Sel ulel la debate, omong rablay wasay kamet ado du ah tiel family tree gidin nga rongi amra'ta'art, ra'ta'amilu'la u'ulio. Ya amral to'oy nga rongi ya la'adamam ma'ngdengi ro'ultu rablay, ndi'gidi nga'gela la'adamam. Ma'ngi ya la ah dalama guksel overa dalama'ak claim e gomo'ol ndi'agamodengi to'oy anding nga rongi ya arbebe'gal nga rsel, ma'ngi ya imgo'ng gada'ingisuk. Mang gundas lo wasay ngirida il morselu olel le gort sel alongo'adamam di'wasay tru'ta'amil lutku. Se amondai tru'ta'amil lutku. Trige yidil mo'il wa'amil lutku. Segida blo'nga rongi ya k'klam mondai wasay tru'tam sisi erdi la'walelti I am concerned that the country does not understand this. I am concerned that the country does not understand this. I am concerned that the country does not understand this. I have been talking about the 13th amendment. 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 I am concerned that the country does not understand this. I have been talking about the 13th amendment. I have been talking about the 13th amendment. I am concerned that the country does not understand this. I am concerned that the country does not understand this. I have been told that the country does not understand this. I have been told that the country does not understand this. I have been talking about the 13th amendment. 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 I am concerned that the country does not understand this. I am concerned that the country does not understand this. I have been talking about the 13th amendment. 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 I have been talking about the 13th amendment.
Mr. President.
Mr. President. I have been talking about the 13th amendment. Basically, I am concerned that the 13th amendment is necessary. I am concerned that the 13th amendment is necessary. I have been talking about the 13th amendment. 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 I am concerned that the country does not understand this. I am concerned that the country does not understand this. I have been talking about the 13th amendment. 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 I am concerned that the country does not understand this. I am concerned that the country does not understand this. I have been talking about the 13th amendment. 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 I am concerned that the country does not understand this.
Mr. President.
Mr. President, I would like to say that I have been talking about the 13th amendment. I would like to say that I have been talking about the 13th amendment. Instead of disputing factions, disputing clan members, involved in the dispute of traditional titles that arises within the clan in the republic, must first be resolved through traditional dispute resolution within the clan. I have been talking about the 13th amendment. I have been talking about the 13th amendment. I am concerned that the country does not understand this. I have been talking about the 13th amendment. 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 I am concerned that the country does not understand this. I am concerned that the country does not understand this. I am concerned that the country does not understand this. I am concerned that the country does not understand this. I am concerned that the country does not understand this. I am concerned that the country does not understand this. I am concerned that the country does not understand this.
Senator Mayor.
Mr. President, I would like to introduce the amendments. 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 Mr. President, I would like to say that the 13th amendment is necessary. I would like to say that the 13th amendment is necessary. I would like to say that the 13th amendment is necessary. I would like to say that the 13th amendment is necessary. I would like to say that the 13th amendment is necessary. I would like to say that the 13th amendment is necessary. I would like to say that the 13th amendment is necessary. I would like to say that the 13th amendment is necessary. I would like to say that the 13th amendment is necessary. I would like to say that the 13th amendment is necessary. I would like to say that the 13th amendment is necessary. I would like to say that the 13th amendment is necessary. I would like to say that the 13th amendment is necessary. I would like to say that the 13th amendment is necessary.
Senator Mayor, I am concerned that the 13th amendment is not settled. I am concerned that the 13th amendment is not settled. I am concerned that the 13th amendment is not settled. Senator Isal, last time, the senator was the senator. The senator Inavo morogirz, the amendment. The senator Isal, the senator. Senator Isal.
I am concerned that the country does not understand this. I am concerned that the country does not understand this. I am concerned that the country does not understand this. I am concerned that the country does not understand this.
Okay. 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 Okay.
I am concerned that the country does not understand this. I am concerned that the country does not understand this. I am concerned that the country does not understand this. I am concerned that the country does not understand this. I am concerned that the country does not understand this. I am concerned that the country does not understand this. I am concerned that the country does not understand this. I am concerned that the country does not understand this. I am concerned that the country does not understand this.
Okay. Senator Tullamis.
Senator President, I would like to discuss the amendments. I would like to discuss the amendments.
Senator Inavo.
Mr. President, I understand that the country does not understand this. The president makes sure and does not violate fundamental rights in our constitution. I am concerned that the country does not understand this. I make sure as the president of the senate, and does not violate fundamental rights guaranteed in our constitution. I am concerned that the country does not understand this. I am concerned that the country does not understand this. I am concerned that the country does not understand this. Mr. President, I am concerned that the country does not understand this.
Senator, I am concerned that the country does not understand this. Okay. Senator, I am concerned that the country does not understand this. I am concerned that the country does not understand this. Senator Sabaugh.
Mr. President, I am concerned that the country does not understand this. I am concerned that the country does not understand this. I am concerned that the country does not understand this. I am concerned that the country does not understand this. I am concerned that the country does not understand this.
Okay. Okay. Sure. Yes. The amendments are not settled. Senator Leader.
Mr. President, I would like to talk about the amendments. 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 I would like to talk about the amendments.
I am concerned that the amendments are not settled. I would like to talk about the amendments.
Mr. President, I would like to talk about the 13th amendment. I would like to talk about the 13th amendment. I would like to talk about the 13th amendment. I would like to talk about the 13th amendment. I would like to talk about the 13th amendment. I would like to talk about the 13th amendment. I would like to talk about the 13th amendment. I would like to talk about the 13th amendment. I would like to talk about the 13th amendment. I would like to talk about the 13th amendment. I would like to talk about the 13th amendment. I would like to talk about the 13th amendment. I would like to talk about the 13th amendment. I would like to talk about the 13th amendment. If the recusal is successful, another representative of Masil Belau shall be appointed. Mr. President, I would like to talk about the 13th amendment. I would like to talk about the 13th amendment. I would like to talk about the 13th amendment. I would like to talk about the 13th amendment. I would like to talk about the 13th amendment. I would like to talk about the 13th amendment. I would like to talk about the 13th amendment. It shall be filed in the court and made part of the record. I am concerned that the 13th amendment is not settled. I would like to talk about the 13th amendment. I would like to talk about the 13th amendment. I would like to talk about the 13th amendment. I would like to talk about the 13th amendment. I would like to talk about the 13th amendment. I would like to talk about the 13th amendment. I would like to talk about the 13th amendment. I would like to talk about the 13th amendment. I would like to talk about the 13th amendment. I would like to talk about the 13th amendment. I would like to talk about the 13th amendment. I am concerned that the 13th amendment is not settled. I would like to talk about the 13th amendment. I am concerned that the 13th amendment is not settled. Despite final determination or final judgment, some twenty new laws are being adopted. I am concerned that the 13th amendment is not settled. I am concerned that the 13th amendment is not settled. I would like to talk about the 13th amendment. Any fine paid under these sections shall be paid to declare of course. I am concerned that the 13th amendment is not settled. I would like to talk about the 13th amendment. I would like to talk about the 13th amendment. I would like to talk about the 13th amendment. Mr. President, I would like to talk about the 13th amendment. I would like to talk about the 13th amendment.
Okay. Any discussion, Senator Isal?
Mr. President, the 13th amendment is originally drafted. I am concerned that the 13th amendment is not settled. First offense, second offense, third and subsequent offense, and fourth offense. I am concerned that the 13th amendment is not settled. I am concerned that the 13th amendment is not settled. I am concerned that the 13th amendment is not settled. I am concerned that the 13th amendment is not settled. A fine. I am concerned that the 13th amendment is not settled. I am concerned that the 13th amendment is not settled. I am concerned that the 13th amendment is not settled. I am concerned that the 13th amendment is not settled. I am concerned that the 13th amendment is not settled. I am concerned that the 13th amendment is not settled. I am concerned that the 13th amendment is not settled. I am concerned that the 13th amendment is not settled. I am concerned that the 13th amendment is not settled. I understand that the 13th amendment is not settled. I am concerned that the 13th amendment is not settled. I am concerned that the 13th amendment is not settled. I am concerned that the 13th amendment is not settled. I am concerned that the 13th amendment is not settled. I am concerned that the 13th amendment is not settled. I am concerned that the 13th amendment is not settled. I am concerned that the 13th amendment is not settled. I take money from the traditional title. I am concerned that the means. I am concerned that the 13th amendment is not settled. I am concerned that the 13th amendment is not settled. I am concerned that the 13th amendment is not settled. I am concerned that the 13th amendment is not settled. I am concerned that the 13th amendment is not settled. I am concerned that the 13th amendment is not settled. I am concerned that the 13th amendment is not settled. Number two, the 13th amendment is not settled. I am concerned that the 13th amendment is not settled. I am concerned that the 13th amendment is not settled. I am concerned that the 13th amendment is not settled. I am concerned that the 13th amendment is not settled. I am concerned that the 13th amendment is not settled. I am concerned that the 13th amendment is not settled. I am concerned that the 13th amendment is not settled. I am concerned that the 13th amendment is not settled. I am concerned that the 13th amendment is not settled. I am concerned that the 13th amendment is not settled. I am concerned that the 13th amendment is not settled. Okay.
Senator Lo Dim.
Senator President, I would like to talk about the 13th amendment. Page one, line twenty-three, line twenty-seven. I would like to talk about the 13th amendment. I would like to talk about the 13th amendment. I would like to talk about the 13th amendment. I would like to talk about the 13th amendment. I would like to talk about the 13th amendment. I am concerned that the 13th amendment is not settled. I am concerned that the 13th amendment is not settled. The 13th amendment is not settled. I am concerned that the 13th amendment is not settled. Not necessarily the general public. I am concerned that the 13th amendment is not settled. I am concerned that the 13th amendment is not settled. I am concerned that the 13th amendment is not settled. I am concerned that the 13th amendment is not settled. I am concerned that the 13th amendment is not settled. I am concerned that the 13th amendment is not settled. The constitution, the cross-over, the traditional law. The legal 13th amendment is not settled. Specific source, specific region, specific hamlet or village. I would like to talk about the 13th amendment. I would like to talk about the 13th amendment. Or if it is. Mr. President, I would like to say. As much as it is taken, it will be taken. And it will be taken. And it will be taken. This is what I want to say, the president. And it will be taken. The proposal will be taken. And it will be taken. Sula, Mr. President.
Ariangod, Senator Inavo.
Mr. President, I would like to say. Line five, and on line eight. The floor amendment number two. For the. Where the. 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 Part of the mediation process. The. 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 Mediation. The. The. Mediation panel. And it will be taken. And it will be taken. And it will be taken. The. The. And it will be taken. The. The mediation panel, and it will be taken. And it will be taken. I would like to say. Mr. President, Sula.
Senator.
Mr. President, I would like to ask. It will be taken. And 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 it will be taken. Some of them. The. 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 And it will be taken. The voting members will be taken. Role, the people who are assessors. And it will be taken. The. 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 Palau Historical Society. The. 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 The most appropriate. The. Part of the assessment, assessors. And it will be taken. And it will be taken. Especially if it is taken. And it will be taken. The. 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 It is more appropriate to get the. The. Reason behind the. The. Representative. The. The. More. Argument. And even create. And it will be taken.
Senator Isal.
I would like to say. In convenience, the judge will be taken. And it 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 will be taken. It will be taken. And it will be taken. It will be taken. It will be taken. And it will be taken. And it will be taken. And it will be taken. It will be taken. It will be taken. And it will be taken. And it will be taken. It will be taken. It will be taken. The. And it will be taken. And it will be taken. And it will be taken. It will be taken. Functional. It will be taken. And it will be taken. And it will be taken. And non-assistance. The. Prominent. And. I don't know. Did he say? A blue print. The. I heard they were there the other day. And it was. Did he say? The. And it will be taken. The. The. No, doesn't make sense. Do me. I may be wrong. Sula.
Senator Mayur.
Senator President, I would like to say. The. The. Right. The. Respectable. The. 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 And it will be taken. 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 The. 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 And it will be taken. And it will be taken. And it will be taken. So. So.
Senator Ariangod. Senator Talam.
Senator President. Directly. Secretly. The floor amendment. Representative. The. The. In the. Mr. President. The. The. And it will be taken. The. The. And it will be taken. The. Mediation panel. The. The. Historical society. The. Politically. State. State cabinet. And it will be taken. The. 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 And it will be taken. The. Section. The. And it will be taken. 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 The. 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 And it will be taken. Mr. President. The. The. And it will be taken. And it will be taken. And it will be taken. Review. The. And it will be taken. And it will be taken. And it will be taken. The. And it will be taken. And it will be taken. The. The. And it will be taken. And it will be taken.
Ariangod, Senator Sanbaw.
President, I would support. The. Amendment. And it will be taken. And it will be taken. And it will be taken. The. The. And it will be taken. Introduce. The. The. And it will be taken. And it will be taken. The. And it will be taken. And it will be taken. The. President. The. And it will be taken. The. Publicly. And it will be taken. 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 President. And it will be taken. And it will be taken. And it will be taken.
Okay.
Legislation. President.
And it will be discussed. And it will be discussed. Senator. Inavo.
President. And it will be taken. The. Already. The. The. As we speak. And it will be taken. And it will be taken. And it will be taken. And. Especially if it is taken. Despite. The. The. Disregard. And it will be taken. The. Orderly. To. Include. The. And. And it will be taken. The. And it will be taken. Unless. The. 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 Underlying reason. The. The. And it will be taken. And it will be taken. The. 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 And it will be taken. The. 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 As much as possible. And sure. And. The. Impartial. And it will be taken. And it will be taken. The. The. And it will be taken. And. Recommendation. The. Assessment. And a final ruling. And it will be taken. And. The. 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 And it will be taken. The. And it will be taken. And it will be taken. The. The. And it will be taken. Respect. And it will be taken. Respect. And it will be taken. Continually. The. The. And. The. Respect. And it will be taken. The. The. And it will be taken. The. 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 And it will be taken. And it will be taken. And it will be taken. The. And it will be taken. The. The. And it will be taken. At least. The. The. Process. The. 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 Judgment. Sula.
Senator Inavo.
Senator President. The. Concerned. The. Final. By. The. Consider. A. By. The. The. Position. The. Public funds. The. The. And it will be taken. Some. Dispute. And it will be taken. And it will be taken. Hold. The. 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 And it will be taken. The. The. And it will be taken. The. 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 And. And it will be taken. And it will be taken. The. State. And it will be taken. Position. And it will be taken. And it will be taken. Unless. The. The. Mediation. And it will be taken. Position. The. Mr. President.
Okay. Senator Isal.
Mr. President, I would like to say. Senator Udim. I would like to say. Article four, traditional rights. Ilwi. And it will be taken. The article five. It is article two, but interesting. It's all. I mean, section two, article five, traditional rights. The. Statute. And traditional law shall be equally authoritative. In case. A conflict between a statute and a traditional law. The statute shall prevail. Only to the extent. It is not in conflict with underlying principles of the traditional law. The. The. And it will be taken. And argue. The. The. And it will be taken. The. And it will be taken. The. Section two. The article five. The. The Constitution is not allowed to be open discussion. I would like to ask you, the article one of the government shall take no action to prohibit or revoke the role or function of a traditional leader as recognized by custom and tradition, which is not inconsistent with this constitution, nor shall it prevent the traditional leader from being recognized, honored, or given formal or functional role at any level of the government. I would like to ask you, what is the function of the government? We will not allow the function. I would like to ask you, if the traditional law is not allowed, it is not allowed to be issued by the state law or by the majority rules or soldiers. We will not allow the article two of article five. It is not allowed to be reviewed.
I would like to ask you, what is the definition of the title? The general title. It is not allowed to be reviewed. It is not allowed to be reviewed. We will not allow the state to be reviewed. It is not allowed to be reviewed. Senator Tabula, you have said that the language is different. It is not allowed to be reviewed. We will not allow the political appointee to be reviewed. It is not allowed to be reviewed. If the title is reviewed, it is not allowed to be reviewed. The title is not reviewed. It is not reviewed. The appointment is not reviewed. The title is not reviewed. It is not reviewed. I would like to ask you, if the title is not reviewed, it is not reviewed. If the title is reviewed, it is not reviewed. It is not reviewed. I would like to ask you, if the title is reviewed. It is not reviewed. If the title is reviewed, it is not reviewed. If the title is reviewed, it is not reviewed. It is not reviewed. I would like to ask you, if the title is reviewed. If the title is reviewed, it is not reviewed. If the title is reviewed, it is not reviewed. If the title is reviewed, it is not reviewed. If the title is reviewed, it is not reviewed. If the title is reviewed, it is not reviewed. I would like to ask you, if the title is reviewed. It is not reviewed. It is not reviewed. I would like to ask you, if the title is reviewed. It is not reviewed. It is not reviewed. Mr. President. Senator Sambau.
President, I would like to ask you, if the title is reviewed. Article four, fundamental rights. The government shall take no action to deny or impair the freedom of conscience or philosophical belief. I would like to ask you, if the title is reviewed. If the title is reviewed, it is not reviewed. He will present himself. If the title is reviewed, it is not reviewed. If the title is reviewed, it is not reviewed. If the title is reviewed, it is not reviewed. If the title is reviewed, it is not reviewed. If the title is reviewed, it is not reviewed. If the title is reviewed, it is not reviewed. Mr. President.
Senator Udim.
President, I would like to ask you, the reservation. The article five, a traditional right. If the title is reviewed, it is not reviewed. Recognized by custom and tradition, which is inconsistent with the constitution. We will not allow the amendment. It is not allowed to be reviewed. The proposal is not allowed. It is not allowed. The proposal is not allowed. If the proposal is not allowed, it is not reviewed. President, I would like to ask you, if the title is reviewed. If the title is reviewed, it is not reviewed. The title is not allowed. The faction is not allowed. If the title is reviewed, it is not reviewed. The tradition is not reviewed. If the title is reviewed, it is not reviewed. If the title is reviewed, it is not reviewed. If the title is reviewed, it is not reviewed. Mr. President.
Senator Corti.
President, I would like to ask you, if the article five is approved. It says, "A government shall take no action or prohibit or revoke the role, but function of a traditional leader, recognized by custom." The title is not reviewed. If the title is reviewed, it is not reviewed. If the title is reviewed, it is not reviewed. If the title is reviewed, it is not reviewed. The title is not reviewed. If the title is reviewed, it is not reviewed. If the title is reviewed, it is not reviewed. The title is not reviewed. The title is not reviewed. If the title is reviewed, it is not reviewed. It is not reviewed. If the title is reviewed, it is not reviewed. If the title is not reviewed, it is not reviewed. If the title is not reviewed, it is not reviewed. If the title is not reviewed, it is not reviewed. If the title is not reviewed, it is not reviewed. It is not reviewed. If the title is not reviewed, it is not reviewed.
I would like to ask you, if the title is reviewed. I would like to ask you, if the title is reviewed. President, I would like to ask you, if the proposal is approved. I would like to ask you, if the proposal is approved. If the amendment is approved, it is not approved. If the proposal is approved, it is not approved. If the proposal is approved, it is not approved. If the proposal is approved, it is not approved. If the proposal is approved, it is not approved. Mr. President. Okay, I would like to ask you, if the proposal is approved. I would like to ask you, if the proposal is approved. I would like to ask you, if the proposal is approved.
President, I would like to ask you, if the bill is approved. If the motion is approved, the bill is approved. If the motion is approved, the bill is approved. If the motion is approved, the bill is approved. We will not allow the resolution. The board's referral. Senate Resolution eleven thousand one hundred and zero. It is confirmed that Robert H. Richmond, the president of Palau International Gulf Centre, made the resolution eleven thousand one hundred and one. We confirm the presidential appointment of Mr. Gabriel Visacuma, the former president of Palau International Gulf Centre. Next, the House Joint Resolution, eleven thousand four hundred and fifty five, ten S. It is sympathetic to condolences of the family. The delegate, Mr. Honorable Marino Oitron.
Okay, the resolution is approved. It is approved. The chairman of Sambau is appointed. He is chairman of Maritime Tourism. The House Joint Resolution can convey sympathy and condolences to the family, the former delegate, Marino Oitron. It is approved.
Okay. Mr. President, the motion is approved. The House Joint Resolution eleven thousand forty five, ten S. It is approved.
Mr. President, I would like to ask you, if the proposal is approved.
Yes.
I would like to ask you, if the proposal is approved.
It is approved. The House Joint Resolution eleven thousand forty five, ten S. It is approved.
Sure.
Mr. President.
I would like to ask you, if the proposal is approved. Please.
Mr. President, I would like to ask you, if the House Joint Resolution eleven thousand forty five, ten S. Is there a discussion?
Okay, clear.
The House Joint Resolution eleven thousand forty five, ten S. The House Joint Resolution to convey heartfelt sympathies and condolences to the family, relatives, friends, and the people of Imelik State and the Republic of Palau for the untimely passing of the late Honorable Marino Oitron. He was a delegate of Imelik State in the ninth Olvirakulaw and the tenth Olvirakulaw and to amend and memorialize his commitment to public service and his valuable contributions to the people and the Republic of Palau. The House Joint Resolution includes the name of the former president of Imelik State. The title is not reviewed. The title is not reviewed. It is not reviewed. It is not reviewed. The contribution is not reviewed. The resolution is approved.
Mr. President, I would like to ask you, if the resolution is approved. I would like to ask you, if the resolution is approved. It is approved. Please.
Mr. President, I would like to ask you, if the House Joint Resolution is approved. Comment? Thank you.
I would like to ask you, if the House Joint Resolution is approved. The delegate, Marino Oitron, is approved. I would like to ask you, if the resolution is approved.
Mr. President, the next resolution is approved. It is approved. It is declared.
Clear.
The resolution eleven thousand one hundred and five. It is the resolution confirming the presidential appointment of Ms. Charlene Mersai to serve as a member of the board of directors of the Palau Public Utilities Corporation for a term of five years. The resolution allows the director of the board of directors to be appointed by request. The resolution is approved.
I would like to ask you, if the resolution is approved. Sure. I would like to ask you, if the resolution is approved. Charlene Mersai is a member of the board of directors of Palau Public Utility Corporation for eleven years. And she is one of the blank. Congratulations. Please.
Mr. President, I congratulate Ms. Mersai for confirming the appointment of her board of directors of the Public Utility Corporation. The next resolution is approved.
Mr. President, I would like to ask you, if the resolution is approved.
The resolution eleven thousand one hundred and seven. The resolution confirming the presidential reappointment of Ms. Bisaya Nusluwi to serve as a member of the Palau Election Commission for a term of four years. The resolution allows the Ms. Bisaya Nusluwi to approve the Palau Election Commission. The president of Sembunz Pobles is asked to approve.
Senator Talamsa.
Mr. President, I would like to ask you, if the title is approved. I would like to ask you, if the title is approved. The appointment of Ms. Nusluwi is approved. I would like to ask you, if the title is approved. I would like to ask you, if the title is approved. I would like to ask you, if the title is approved.
Kada madegit klasi kada el bangra cloz senkyo relan mirakra twenty, twenty four eh, ngirela lospe aradal tirar mugatatal orutetial lobi sa election commission, eh, kid osperingil, ospertil ultuira klima de ngertir eh, ngirela tial luriora election commission. Ma malunita bekel Senatora Sambosaviren senkyo ra Miss Us Louis motian el appointment ringi loltira kar tial appointmentra President motial resolution eh, President Ramne introduceringil oldubra eh, si eh, Miss Louis motiano, lemutu mo serve la Election Commission, komansula.
Sum digia godi, clerga brusa balot. Sir Twishes, mutel mugodonge sesionergidel mora order. Ma senkyo el mora Miss Bisayang Us Louis amle eight yes, trino, ewana blanca. Manganga amlo de ansabel, el mai. Senator Inabo.
Move to reconsider the nomination of President.
Si da motionel bow reconsider. Mang trigel roguil gongel du oi? Om tok, namai, sir Twishes. Mutel mugodonge sesionergidel mora order, flow leader.
President, eh, damlar ogir a adoption eh, galender, eh, de olmol mel tia restatzen dergidin diakana dhor teen ma forteen. Adabora fifteen, eh, ngari ai gel betogol koru communication, eh, miscellaneous communication bergid. Tia the technotra sel miscellaneous communication eleven das six ninety. El mol mutra sel miscellaneous eleven das seven one three. Komra kumra bekel Senatora Salamnamunia tealil koru proustro ai gel kakarusel communication, didan utagegidel.
Point of Privilege, eh, President.
Amsteytra Privilege, eh, gao, Senator Inabo.
Eh, President, eh, soalsteytra rulesera, awlal, eh, kumlasay. Hmm, diakal sapela memberan ngara Asiat Chamber, eh, diakal senkyo.
Ngara rules?
Ngara rules, ngara.
Kamivi.
Non voting, no member present in the Senate shall refuse to vote unless excused in accordance with section one of this rule. A member who is present, who fails to respond to the call of his name, upon a call of the law shall be instructed by the President to respond yes or no. And if he or she still fails to vote, the President shall order the clerk to record his or her vote in affirmative. Tia hi dal rule, eh, President, tablgolak kumlasay, a senkyo el mora usanain. And she should be confirmed, eh, basing mo membera bordara el blil appointment ringa President.
Okay, kamie tilang tokora roll goal, antokora secret ballot. Adi tia secret ballot, ndiakal roll goal.
Ndink senkyo tial Lulaura Senate, eh, ni senkyo tial Lulaura Senate. Mangiram el rule, eh, President.
Sir Twishes, eh, President.
Sir Twishes, mutel mugodonge sesionergidel mora order, flow leader.
President, eh, kada kada le kada negora risiosse kada va discussa sel point of information Senator Inabol giril sel resultra aboutingra Miss Louis mo adala Election Commission, eh, Board of Election Commission. Eh, gid sel goam neditermina, eh, adamesera rule sergidengwal sel bil point ringa eh, Senator Inabo, eh, sel guk, eh, osingla awlala awal, eh, dulaseng, hmm, di apply mo ra ai gel eh, voice vote ma roll goal. Eh, mang, eh, secret ballot, eh, modiakal se edel apply se gidel rule seringi. Eh, ndi gada, hmm, mlmol mel eh, ngira, ndiakal adala, eh, gid ngartel se el meski da, eh, proper determination. Eh, wal kadi open discussion, eh, kada mi ra eh, adala, eh, gid el mo meski da guk opinioni giril sey. Wal, eh, kada amo motiona pending for reconsideration, mang se gidia eh, eh, amo wal resulta se gidel ne point of information Inabo, eh, bol se edel mlmol, eh, Mister President. Kada ngarsel miscellaneous communication, eh, amle point outai gel several communication, lemutu sel, eh, miscellaneous communication eleven das seven one, one three. Ngari sel, eh, miscellaneous communication eleven das, eh, seven one four. Diakal ngara list, eh, ndi ngite bol se edel suspendarul, se da place ringi ra eh, tial kalender gidem bol partra miscellaneous communication, sum move.
Si da motionu namduonge seken, mtrigel roguil gongel du oi? Om tok, namoi se, flow leader.
Vaise Mister President, eh, ai gidha miscellaneous communication, eh, ngar madadma eh, lakakamentra adal giril, eh, bol se edel continue mor sel sixteen, eh, miscellaneous business.
Okay, au, au, enada borse me digulit, eh, Senator Inabo, bomomisar sele miscellaneous communication, eh, mara gavnora blur ablilio, ma delegetra sula blal giril trigele employera state, eh, base komgrai ol sisbertir sel, eh, salary increase. Eh, ongerunge sel bilra, eh, ngara Senate, eh, mlgora eh, base ai gel tokora adui ma, eh, utma, eh, el mora gort, eh, dibol adra abelawa ogregrir ringi. Eh, al sumengmo odiaha adjasel mori nga kanflikter trigel adjasel giril aigegid. Eh, adha Chief Justice amo appointra adra mrigel, el mo dias lobentriar terul assessor el ader belau. Eh, Senatora Eldabeel, akmo onguwe, eh, mutul reassigneringil mora chairman, eh, Senator Isal. Bol lo misar ngier. Eh, ngari angodusuel giril, mal, bol subel el mereg de lotabadi. Ngari nga, ngari nga miscellaneous seringer, Senator Isal.
Akko, di, diashu arbeklad, bekaw tokuni. Arbeklar Senator, sel nosavir il gukatenda ai gel tial obersetiril, lobenge la Ministry of Justice. Mang maldi madel, eh, la, eh, imol officer, eh, mlio faland, eh, mang sel leme kada mosit trigil, aktabisosin kagaal divisi, ngari ngel eh setup drasi ateisanting. Emroga ya special prosecutora blal galnfermeringi meratu oklagra mandei. El mel, kada dimnakumotoni ringi meri meri obersetra obisar ngi. Akpen misoaloged ringi. Ngariya questionel boktrat, eh, lamomega raklugu, eh, mandei ma kuarmosim arbeklad. Kada di lid questions. Eh, base sel bo riha problem, eh, waigegid, eh eh, let's say, eh, arboris ditstubi investigerid tokunitigel luriora, eh, sel seldier, eh, abosier agel boig. Say, nganiyalamal tel under the law, subel mosoi subar ngi. Eh, investigate, eh, fala gey, eh, persecute. Tashgumtudi bulisa abo investigate, eh, boi ga tia, eh, besar ngi, eh, mal clear el ngari nga akanflikto bin tuestar ngi tuoi. Mang um, tia da purpose, eh, bel guk pumasaf of the swell. Linganga whether we like it or not, whether we believe it or not, nganga awadra top low enforcera blur belau. Ni, ma meredra arboris, ma AG. Trigai ngi, eh, amatal tial buluga tokora protection of property, ma lul belau, ma raram ngirela guk kow the swell. Going forward, eh, do ngelo, base ma in the future. Kada madengelo, base nga ni atamel, kuda blil oversetepadru ullel numlo istura AG, kali AG argi, misar ngi. Ndi tial luriora blad to obersetra Ministry, eh, ma lwarenta transparent and clear la abel ibiditier adal, eh, enforce alla, base ngarasabi irbul, eh, ngaradiak, eh, ngaralir, ngaradiak. Na ulak, de requesta espimai. Sula, eh, Mister President.
Sula, eh, Senator Isal, eh, a akti soalmo o askergau, mar bekl member saragamiti, mar Senatora Srogul, base tial oversight el dorur ngil girila Ministera Justice, adiakadid oversight edaberei. Agul ngitergau, eh, sel gamiti, bomrelia recommendation eh, base atogol milgatmokla, hmm, proper malubendia. Eh, al sumeng proper engunil. Ndi sumendia, engunil lemru la gamiti report eh, lemru la recommendation, el mol base atogol milgatmokla, ndiakal unil mang tia gidha giril la kanmutmokla mtaursul, sula.
Me diktoritial, mal, mal, bertauta tamlangem, eh, le tiaidal diliya flow leader gid ra lastel meeting, das oversight, eh, bol briga se gidel, tia tosobasei. Membera gamiti, eh, na sente, eh, support, eh, se sengbao, barbeklad, base winitu motibel ngoda, eh, maluniar ngoda rekmeti, eh, amesa osisiu luriora diliya gamiti garo education. Guk da riha hiri ra few months ago, eh, ma will documente da ai gel guk di ilobar shehim, eh, will follow the gamiti garo education, eh, mo luli osisiu lurior, sula.
Yangmalunile osisiu tokora Senator Tavulolak, mal, merengasulemra sel blamgatmakil, eh, malunil information, eh, gidaba isar ngi guk omesilo, base, eh, ngarasabederur giril se, Senator Mariur.
Vaise President, eh, koru, eh, soalgora di mo omugora gansumakal giril tial Departmental Communication eleven das six three. Sel masa darabor censa lululau regulation giril trigel digital residency merbelau. Tia President, eh, ador talor trar ngil mergid, eh, Olbyra Lulau, base mal diahdat censa lulbelau giril trigal adala merbelau. Ma kora diogel, base ngaram tokora karamla gongim, eh, asab edel ma mlod, ai ganga, lubeng toktil trar ngim, base, eh, diahdolod, eh, ndi sevan sel bol ngai, guk lume, eh, nabasabeder mlod. Akwa diogel segidel, eh, kada tokora akora, eh, misar gidha Olbyra Lulau, wa tokora mo klugol. Tumelmuk ma ngaram, eh, tokora mal gongi, eh, saul, eh, tokrimula ai gel olul, eh, gidawa tokora di mo eh, me ma kteogel ngil, eh, la trigiduk motcensa ra, se gidel una immigration eh, extension, eh, trigal atsel merbelau, monairi, nairi. Nguk mongod, eh, trigal bebir ra, eh, adal mer dingra blur belau, ma kada di dulis, eh, gidu konsur, eh, base amnetokol mergid, eh, base, kada gonger sel digital residency eh, ndi ndiakal ngidil mongod, eh, giril a, tashgumtumetmur belau. Se gidha di konsur, eh, ngagepridetem, sula.
Niangmalunile Senatora Mariur. Ngirel mulurgitla, ai gel gidel doruling, eh, bebir la kadrul yalla eh, auriu le, kada mo ottrail amendel, amendel, amend. Mang kada mulurgitla doruling, hitadil gidlo sisvidra atogoril il gidamo lisaksikteringi, auriu le, modiakal musmokla, mang ngirel mal mulurgitla. Se gidel tokora digital residency, si Senator Inabo ngla akau ma chairman Banging, eh, ma chairman JGA, bomomisar ngi. Eh, eh, ngirel mo, ngirel moblogatakla urelil seiling eh, sela dakutel nguing, blengoda, eh, tokora, eh, langgora amrael gora waya, eh, the step by step, eh, ngoy gidel morsel, niya amle moktigra tial, leng gid tial omisar ngi, eh, kada masa darad digital residency, eh, mo ngia gukora atogora crypto coin el mo, alakal bol partra ngi, ndiakal swell, eh, mo unil lurior. Kada mulurgitla, diregal tia gidle crypto, eh, Senatora Eldabeel.
Stable coin. Eh? Stable coin.
Stable coin, eh, wa alakala, eh, Minister of Finance, samlatteka lider ngi, eh, ospe aragablemente el ruula. Sen private engmo partragablemente. Ngirel mo make sure, eh, kada we're on the right trackaling. Kada mol otaklidel moru liat tokorid eh, rulit tial gablemente ra blur belau, el mongod, awdudel, malubeng teletele la operation ra, eh, sel tial gablemente, eh bigosse tia gidde crypto coin, eh, abladongul meo eh, masaodan ngil, diakala, eh, eh, la kada gid kada moru ra pilot project, eh, mora gablemente engmo rata, eh, diakala. Senatoru Div.
Oi, sula Mister Presidenta. Miscellaneous aga Mister President, eh, masa tia gideligar a stable coin, malubeng cryptocurrency. Awuligera adra la, ai gel Presidente, ndi abolblatak meski da hensi. Omakhalak mo share, Mister President, eh, maralang mo more for information, eh ndi ndiluk mulbase, ndiakala, nganiakisi ela Minister of Finance merur ngi on a temporary basis. Rongo giwa grant, eh, maqmle follow up logeruk mulbase ma sumen temporary, nsebeel kun convert, convey eh, tial US dollar, eh, motralangod, eh, badengela, awdodet transfer receive of funds ndiakal swel enser sey. Ndi, eh, gid tokora awdodet Mister Presidenta ngara argument nine section five, eh, watamalala, eh, seh mal ngalalal Olbyra Lulau. Ma sumen diakala, ndiakal swel ama a eight central gablemente el ruula, atogorid diakal ulti ra krallla. Leng tial gablementa aldrodl, eh, kada ruhtrigil ulti ra krallla, ndiakal swel di blange do, do lurigi. Ndi President, eh, sel le, merengasural recreating il logic tial international transfer of funds. Wa igal digital currency, President, eh, se mengconvert thirty five seconds transfer amal mklolawdod. Si sel, eh, merengasural dekrecreasingil mora, eh, adala, ai gidam giril follow up sel tokora grants, eh, tia grant tagel, eh, private, eh, servipal company, eh, private for profit, eh, gombaling. Ma sumen dimlakal follow up procurement law, malubeng bidel mora blur la, blur la eh, tumeligara osisibir, eh, sel la gablemente rigid ader belau, eh, gidlo blur abulu adakodan il tokon. Si pending, eh, Mister President, eh, mahalak mo summarize ringi lo altagele legal opinion, eh, tia kalo sigra bebir professional opinion no misar ngi, leng ndiakal swel, eh, di do ngok legoda lolongoa, eh, atogora monetary exchange luli itrala, malubeng diakalala, leng makertukra watmanla, si senal alal Olbyra Lulau. Rukutmaklia, eh, aidlan ra, eh, transfer of funds, ma rece, eh, receipt of funds, ma national currency. Sula, Mister President.
Sula Senator, Senator Tavulol.
Soal Presidenta, akti unitateala, sesel ngari ababringela gamitir gaurora eh, Ministry of Education, logera trentingil, eh, tokora omsubiran agerama trentingil, eh, tokora school. Eh, kada merengasura Minister ma hensin mergid, mang kada na targa kia obersetirin mergidra April twelve, eh, eru klok. Di guk tial tial eh, kok, anusin arbeklad kada unita anyes, eh, sel temel, eh, merada, bol se edukmokle, eh, desas, kuru blur bela, sen giril gid, eh, oh, sula.
Sula, eh, Senator, Senator Sumino.
Sula, eh, tial ngari, eh, Mister President, eh, malunil gobsin mergo, marbeklad. Tial miscellaneous agamaldi momutugirila Palau National Youth Halli Del, ngari isela March fifteen. Mang akti mlo omteera guk gamitir gidra Community Culture, Youth and Sports Affairs, eh, mlsoabegal mo atendra Ayud Debate, eh, ngari nga, ai gel high schools, eh, medro ngolela Palau High School, eh, ma Miss Ente High School. El malunil program, eh, koru akatigel, hmm, for, for a while, ndiakal atar ndiakal mgamokla tokora mlamgi simo malunil a debate. Osabedel Mr. Angalegal, eh, guk koru ngar segidel tokora debate ra oldaswa, eh, lortrar oldaswir. Diregal mnetokor, eh, koru Ayud Program, sel girra elementary school, eh, ai gel culture awareness programsa school. Giril, eh, ngalga school, motigel guk migal ngalga school. Kada diregal mo atale, diregal orenasulela, ai gel state government, eh, ma ai gel Eldabeel ra blu Ayud Organizations, eh, diregal mle organize Ayud Programs, eh, tira, eh, mal mle koru active. Mang osabedel guk atenda bebir le, orenasuril giril, ai gel luriora mgamokla, eh, ngiril adra blur belau. Maqmal di ngatale, mal di mutul wisra Happy Bilare Diud, eh, mra roguil, ngasgaral Isal Merdira blur belau, eh, wisdom, eh, wisdom on the best, eh, lomteera, ah, sen, sula.
Sula Senator. Flow leader.
Adabora anansment, eh, Mister President, eh, ma stay at elia, Senator, san nga ni anansmentati.
Senator Sengbao.
Presidenta, gamitir gaura Tourism, Environment, Maritime, eh, morandakta tablol confirmation hearing sera klogu. Eh, tre uklok ma eleven oklak, sel ten oklara, mubenge la Mister Welpetou eh, blal nominatinga President, eh, el momentbera Palau International Coral Reef Center eh, eleven oklageng guk confirmation hearing era Cindy Fitzpatrick, eh, el mora Palau Visitors Authority. Presidenta, ma kunitra members, ma roguil Senator, sel mede das, bol se edel mo tial confirmation hearing. Tia ga, eh, sel nae President, eh, kada remula confirmation hearing eh, diregal, eh, mosed lotodan mora way, eh, adarbeblera, mungentitigaid, base, nominish. Sula, Mister President.
Senator Mariur.
Vaise President, eh, diregal achustera onoklaya, ngariya meeting, eh, lobenge la eh, tia EPU team, eh, lobenge la PPUC eh, tiaa requesta a vice chair, eh, gamitil, lungitra, eh, sen lotel mitra PPUCil giril aigegidle eh, tarif aigal olngi la aral ma suwer ma adengi mata namluselmo, eh, ngari nga, mal, eh, croquel documents, eh, blal sendelme, ma ktolita, eh, mlase, emaila staff, eh, mora bekl, adam bol subilmesa, ma segidel chustera onoklaya, bol subedel. Misai, eh, gigit documents, eh, da mitra adap PPUC, sula, President.
Digia ngoto, flow leader.
Digia ngoto, eh, Mister President, eh, bodomo sim, eh, ma eh, maqmu maqmo se edel longli talbait subject to all of the chair.
Si da motionu namduonge seken, mtrigel roguil gongel du oi? Om tok, namoi se, kon sula.